Tonight's meeting, the Chelmsford Planning Board, starting with a work session on the floodplain by law.
Okay. So with us this evening is Nadia Madden. She's with DCR Department of Conservation and Recreation. And Nadia is a floodplain management specialist. Just for a quick background, I've been, Nadia's been, reached out to me. I've been working with her to get it to this point. We thought it'd be beneficial for the planning board to receive a brief overview presentation as to what is being asked of the town. So with that, Nadia, I will, good evening, and I will bring up the PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Ready when you are.
Sure. Well, thanks for having me tonight. As you know, as you said, I am with, I work with the state. I'm with the flood hazard management program. We are the state coordinating office for the National Flood Insurance Program. So we work with FEMA, we work with the state, but we don't work for FEMA. We work for the state of Massachusetts. And really, our job is to support you in this process of, you know, adopting new flood maps, understanding all the regulations that you need to have to be in the program. You can go ahead to the next slide. So we're just going to walk through, I've already had a chance to review your current floodplain bylaws. And I think it, what we've done at the state is we basically created a model that has all of the minimum requirements for the National Flood Insurance Program, everything that's in the federal regulations that is not covered by either the State Building Code or the Wetlands Protection Act. And so it's what you need to have in your local zoning bylaw that will let your community meet the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. And so along with that, we have a set of language that's been pre-approved by FEMA that passes through the AGO's office. So it's there, this whole model bylaws here is a tool for you in your community in staying up to date with the regulations. Yeah, a couple of facts about the National Flood Insurance Program. It's created by an act of Congress in 1968. The first Massachusetts community to join with Wareham, which joined in 1971. Chelmsford joined in 1980. And then most communities in Massachusetts also joined between the 70s and the 80s. Our office was created by an executive order of the governor in 1978. And part of your responsibility as a member of the program is that you agree to adopt, locally adopt and enforce all of the National Flood Insurance Program requirements, which are found in Title 44 of the federal regulations. So Congress wrote the rule, FEMA administers the program, and then we help you to enforce it. And this basically gives you access to flood insurance. You've got 149, you know, residences or buildings that are covered in Chelmsford. We've got over $43 million in coverage. It's mostly single and two to four family homes. And the policies can be in or out of a flood zone. And in Chelmsford, half of your policies are in a flood zone, half are outside of a flood zone. And so this model is just really here to help you have your regulations in place. So the reason this has come up for Chelmsford is that if you look at all those communities in green, Chelmsford is one of them, you are on the verge of having new flood maps that you need to adopt. We believe FEMA will issue letters of final determination for your, what are currently draft preliminary maps. We believe they'll issue that in early January of 2025. And at that point, you're going to have six months to make sure all your regulations are up to speed and then to actually adopt the new map in your local regulations. And, you know, when you adopt these new flood maps, you also, because you have to make sure that your flood zoning bylaw is up to date. And that's why we have this model. FEMA does a very rigorous review at that time when you have new flood maps. And the language that we have in our model, again, has already been pre-approved by FEMA. I've already provided an initial review of your zoning regulations. And we will also review whatever your final draft is. So.
One quick question. So who, who does the final checkoff or approval of our bylaw that it complies?
Yeah, the absolute final checkoff has to come when it's actually in your bylaws and you voted it in. That is going to come from FEMA. So we do a lot of checks beforehand to make sure that you have everything that FEMA is going to ask. They have a pretty specific checklist of everything they want to see in a local regulation. And so we, you know, we tend to, you know, come to us for a final check because we'll really go over it with a fine tooth comb and make sure you have all the little pieces that you need. So.
And are the amounts of current flood insurance that Chelmsford has, is that in the presentation?
I think I had mentioned it. It's earlier. It's 43 million in coverage for structures.
Okay.
So it's not, it's, you know, not every house in town, but it's significant for those people who have it.
Okay. So a question for Evan then is that six months then, within the time, within six months of the time that we get the official map from FEMA, we have to have the bylaw adopted?
Yeah, initially, the thought was to bring this to Springtown meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what all the other communities in the Merrimack watershed are doing. So.
So the insurance, the 43 million in coverage, how does that work? Just so I understand, because do people, because some people may have their own, if they're in flood zones, have their own flood insurance now?
Well, so a lot of people have, if you have a federally backed mortgage and your house is in a FEMA-defined, you know, in that 1% flood zone, you are required to have flood insurance of some sort. The flood insurance offered through the National Flood Insurance Program is the cheapest insurance that's available for flood insurance. Flood insurance is never a bit, you know, it's always a rider on top of your regular home insurance.
And this 43 million would be then in addition? Or is this, what is this 40?
But just, that's how much coverage people have. And half of the people who have flood insurance in Chelmsford aren't even in a flood zone. They just maybe are near a flood zone and want to protect their property.
Okay, got it. That's, all right. Thank you.
Yeah. It's available, because you're a member, it's available for everyone in the community who wants it. Okay, so we're not going to go through the whole model tonight. I am going to be, we are going to be doing it next week. And I'll have, I'll have Evan sent that out. But we are going to do a general training next Thursday from noon until 1:30, virtually if you'd like. But we're going to talk through a couple of areas where Chelmsford does need to upgrade, your bylaws in particular. So if you want to go to the model slide. So we're going to talk about which ones are locally required. Like I said, much of the NFIP, all of the things that are in the federal regulations, Title 44, mostly in Section 59 through 75. Most of them are in 60.3. Most, many or most of the requirements are actually in the flood standards for the State Building Code. But those that are not are typically zoning kinds of requirements. And so that's why most communities, including Chelmsford, I think, has them in their zoning bylaw. Okay, so they're not new requirements. It's just that MA previously was not, FEMA was not as stringent about having every regulation that needed to be there in the local bylaws, and now they really are. And so, yeah, we're going to talk about some of them, some things you already have. The ones in green are things that you've had because you, there's a lot of pieces in your current floodplain bylaw that use are the state's 2012 model, which was a simpler one. And there's some sections in red that we had to add in our most recent edition of this. Okay, you can move forward. So this one is just for the language that you'll want to use for the use of the map. You know, you're basically, you have some standard language. You have a county map, we have one for all of Middlesex. And the date will be issued, like I said, I think in early January. It's the dates we're hearing from FEMA right now. So once you have the dates, once you have those letters of final determination, they'll have an actual date when the map becomes effective. It will most likely be in July of 2025.
Nadia's comments are on the hard copy in your packet?
Are those comments in the document color-coded, like the slides, or when she's talking about green and red?
Oh, so the green, the green ones are just things that you might already have in your current bylaw. The ones in red, you probably don't have at all. So the first one being the designation of the community floodplain administrator, I think this is missing from Chelmsford's bylaw at the moment. And so that's just something you have to have as a designated role. Often, but not always, the building commissioner. It could also be conservation. It could be the head of planning. Sometimes it's a town engineer. A floodway encroachment, this is really one of the most, number six. That's one of the most key ones in terms of language. Again, this is something I think Chelmsford has some of the languages needed. You really need to have all of it. You know, you really want to be careful, especially when you have not just the floodplain, but there's this other area, the regulatory floodway. This is typically the river channel. It might be a little bit beyond the actual, where the water is flowing most of the time. But it's the area that FEMA has determined, you know, when they model that 1% storm, it's where the water is going to be flowing the fastest and the most, being the most dangerous. And you really don't want to encroach on that unless you've had an engineer do, it's called a hydrology and hydraulic study, where they've done a study to prove that that's not going to raise flood risk for anyone else around them in the community.
So do we currently have floodways designated in our, our map?
Yeah, you have them on your, all your major rivers.
Okay.
So, sorry, you can, you can go back to unnumbered A zones. That's another one that you probably need to have some updates. I think that's missing entirely. Number seven. So this is, you need to have that language. Water course alterations, you probably have some of the language. Let me take a look. No, you, yeah, you need to fix your addresses because the offices have moved and we're not requiring you to put the addresses anymore. You have our contact information by email. So this one, number 14, this is very similar to the water course requirement. This is if you get any data that changes the base flood elevation, special flood hazard area. This is typically something that you've done to, like, often it's a flood improvement project where you've done something to reduce flood risk, or maybe you've, maybe you've had a dam removal, something like that. So just FEMA also wants to have that information. Once, once you've obtained it, you need to share that with FEMA within six months.
So how does that work if, for example, an applicant is proposing that, that the technical data regarding their particular site, that they have better technical data to show that that's actually not the case? What happens in that case?
Well, I mean, if they're going to be altering a water course, you would want to share that with our office and with FEMA beforehand anyhow. And so you could, you could get some, some information on that. The applicant can always file a letter of map change, or most likely a letter of map revision with FEMA. They can do a conditional one before they do the work, and they can do an actual one afterwards. But the, the issue being, they can't necessarily, they can't do anything that raises the base flood elevation. And they definitely have to prove, they have to prove that they're, that they're not, if they're doing any work in the floodway.
Okay, okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay. So, okay, this is just, you don't have the variance language. This is pre-standard. If someone wants a variance from the building code and they go up to the State Building Code Appeals Board, they just, we're just, FEMA is asking that you keep a copy of the variance if it has to do with work in the floodplain, that you keep a record in your files, and that you issue a letter to the property owner about the impact of that, you know, of that decision and their potential flood risks, including their flood insurance risks. So just, you know, there's some, some filing information and a letter that you need to send to the property owner in this situation. Then you can also have variances not to the building code, but to these actual floodplain bylaws. But those need to meet state law requirements, and they need to have these conditions. So it's got to be good and sufficient cause, exceptional non-financial hardship. You have, they have to prove that the variance is not going to result in any addition threats to public safety or public expense, that there's not going to be any fraud, and it really needs to be the minimum action necessary to afford relief. So there's always some conditions where you might have to have a variance, but it just, they should be pretty rare because if FEMA comes in and does a review of your community permits, they're going to look very carefully at these.
So that's something handled by the ZBA, right?
Yes, yes. And this is some guidance for them on when they should grant them.
Is the ZBA aware of that?
We currently, I think the bylaw currently references a special permit, but it's referencing for uses in structures, not necessarily the, not necessarily the.
The flood elevation?
Right, correct.
Yeah. And there's only a few things that should need to actually go for the ZBA in terms of this bylaw. So, you know, it's some sort of work that's probably going to be happening in, in the floodplain, possibly the floodway, or something sort of unusual.
Yeah, I think the ZBA should be made aware of this and get their feedback because I was on the ZBA for quite a while. And, and that looks like that's, that, if I was a ZBA member, I would be thinking, what exactly is it that I'm supposed to be evaluating here? What criteria am I supposed to be using? And what kind of technical data am I expecting to see or not expect to see? So.
Right. And the big one is if there's work in the floodway, they need to be seeing H and H study, hydrology and hydraulics and whatever review process you have in the town. Sometimes people have an engineer on hire to help you review that. Or sometimes you have a good town engineer who can help to review that. Those are some of the processes. You can, can't ask our office for help too, in sort of situations where you're not sure.
Okay.
Okay. And then I think the last one, there's some other ones that are missing. There's abrogation. I just put in a disclaimer of liability because that one is not, I didn't see that anywhere. It's abrogation and severability are the other two, but sometimes those might be elsewhere in your zoning bylaw. And I hadn't seen them yet. But abrogation is just, you know, this is going to, this should be more, if this is more stringent than any other of your other laws that would also apply in this area, then this, this one, you know, should be the one that takes effect. And severability is a pretty standard clause. And then the other piece, I think, is the definitions, certain required definitions that FEMA wants to see. You may have another definition section in your zoning bylaw, but you need to either incorporate these into this part of the bylaw or into your general definitions section. And FEMA really wants to see these as written. And you can specify that they're for the floodplain district in particular.
Do we have a definitions in the current?
No. No, as Nadia mentioned, current bylaws based upon the state's 2012 model.
Right, and they didn't?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. There were some definitions, and sometimes towns incorporated them into the general definitions section of the zoning bylaw, but it wasn't, FEMA at that time was less stringent than FEMA today. So.
I think we definitely want to, want to co-locate them.
What's that?
I think we definitely want the definitions in this particular thing.
We could also reference them from the general.
Yeah, yeah, if there's, yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
So that's, you know, I think I also shared my review and comments, and that was linked in the minutes for this meeting. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions at this time for the planning board now, or, you know, even later on.
One quick question, Nadia. Based upon your experience where you've, where towns have an existing bylaw, but it's not in compliance with the current model, do you find that communities are trying to rework their existing bylaw to comply? Or are they scrapping it entirely and starting with the model? What are your recommendations?
It's really up to you. I don't think Chelmsford has anything that's necessarily a higher standard. I mean, Massachusetts is a home rule state, so I have worked with some communities that really want to do things in a quite specific way, where they just want to incorporate what they have to into their existing floodplain bylaw. Other communities are really happy just scrapping what they have and putting in the model. The model will give you the minimum that you need. If there are other things you want to keep in that you think are, you need for the, for your community, you can certainly do that.
So you've, you've mentioned higher standards, and in your, your markup, you identified that 19580C is a higher standard?
Let me take a look at that. Let's see, 19580C. Yeah, I mean, you kind of, well, unless I'm misreading this, it kind of sounds like people aren't allowed to build new buildings in the floodplain district. Is that correct?
That's, that is how it's read. I can't recall if and when there was ever a new building, a new structure built in a floodplain. There's a lot, we have a lot of parking lots.
That in itself is a higher standard. If you're saying that no building can be constructed, or the existing structures can't be altered, enlarged, or moved, no dumping, filling, or transfer, or relocation, those are all higher standards. And, yeah, I mean, I think if you, you put them in for a reason, if you think you need them, I would say keep them.
What are some other typical higher standards that you're seeing?
Well, that's a one, prohibition of new structures or, you know, expanding existing structures in those floodplanes. That's, that's a big one. We are coming out with some guidance for communities on higher standards that we're going to be rolling out in January. We're working with the Office of Economic Development and a couple of other departments across the state to get that language consistent. But that, I mean, that's a big one. The one that you have is a big one. Some communities have some things. They require the FEMA elevation certificates or the floodproofing certificates when people do build in the floodplain. But if you're not even letting people build in the floodplain, that's, that's, that's already quite protective. So that, it's a substantial one.
I think Joel had mentioned earlier that currently it's the zoning board that administers the zoning provision. Is there anything preventing that from being transferred from zoning board to planning board?
I mean, not, certainly, we, I've seen both. So there's nothing that's, that seems to be preventing you at the state level, at the town level, the politics of getting that done. I can't, certainly can't advise on that.
Because it's, because it's not coming through 40A, but through some other?
I didn't think there was a restriction. I just, I just wonder to what extent we've, maybe we've reached the point where it's better served to be with the planning board as you're doing site plan and things of that nature.
Yeah. There are definitely other communities that do it through a planning board review. And there are some communities that do quite a good job doing this. Happy to give you some references if that is useful. A lot of communities now do this coordinated review. The special permit process, I don't know if Chelmsford is an MBTA community. You might be.
Yes.
We are, yes.
And I don't know if you have put any of your districts in the floodplain or not.
No, we avoided it.
So that's smart. So then you don't have to worry about the, the conflicts between as-of-right building and the special permit process. So, yeah, you could, I mean, you can do it either way. So communities, I've seen it in the, you know, special permit process, zoning board of appeals. Some communities have moved it from that to the planning board, or always had it through the planning board. A lot of communities kind of do this interdepartmental review where you'll have building, conservation, and planning sit down to look at projects that are in the floodplain and probably other things as well. Westford has moved to that system from the special permit process pretty recently, and so far, they're happy with it. Is that helpful? But, I mean, it's, we're a home rule state, so it is to some degree up to you how you do the regulations. FEMA just wants to make sure that you have it and that, you know, when they come to visit the community, when they come to look at the buildings that are built in the floodplain, that you don't have, you know, that you're actually, you're following the rules. There's no violations. So.
Okay. So procedurally, as I understand it, we're targeting Springtown meeting. One option is that I could work with you to maybe bring this current draft up to what you would think is a final?
Yeah.
And maybe bring that back to the planning board. You mentioned that there's a webinar next week?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to have a training webinar, and I'll send around the information for that. It should be on Teams. So it's going to be on the entire model bylaw, and we're going to walk through every piece of it. And so it's a great place if you have looked through your review and you have specific questions, you could come listen to that and also bring your questions. So we'll have another one in January as well. But I think your warrant closes in January.
It'd be, yeah, mid-Febuary, I think is when they sign, sign the warrant.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nadia?
So the, the markup version is the current draft with comments.
Correct.
And then the plan is for you and Nadia to work on pulling in the rest of wording?
I can certainly do that if that's the preferred, you know, option for the board.
I think that'd be great.
I think that makes sense. There doesn't seem to be anything terribly controversial.
Yeah, I don't think it's a heavy lift. I think it's just a matter of making sure that the current bylaw includes everything that it needs to include.
Yep.
And then the board can have a discussion about, you know, whether you think it makes sense to. sense to transfer the special permit, and maybe add some higher standards where appropriate.
The special permit, is that dictated by the town charter?
No, it's a local, it's a, it's a local option.
No, but I mean, who?
So changing it, what if it would be required?
Changing it, would that require charter?
No, it'd be, be part of the town meeting vote to,
Okay.
to adopt the amended zoning.
How often do you have, do you know how often you have floodplain things going through your ZBA for special permits?
It's very infrequent, and as I read that bylaw again, we have had new structures built in the floodplain. So that 180, that 180 dash C, it's not a complete prohibition, because 185 dash 82, the special permit provision, allows the zoning board to issue a special permit to deviate from the prohibition. So we've had several structures over the last 10, 15 years successfully built within the floodplain, but it's primarily parking lots.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, there's, there's lots of provisions in the state building code for building in a floodplain. It's something you can do that you're allowed to do. It's not always a smart thing to do, but there are ways to do it to make it, you know, less risky.
Right, right. I think we've had several solar fields as well in the floodplain.
Wasn't the lighthouse school parking garage portion in the floodplain?
Um, possibly.
There was something there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right. A portion of.
Yeah, and they left it open so it could flood, and.
And there was the Grismill Two was proposed.
Yep. Yeah, we've had, we've had a number of them. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Nadia, and I'll be in touch.
Okay, great. Yeah, feel free to reach out with questions. And like I said, I'll send the information over. If anyone wants to join our training next week, you are very welcome to.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Nadia. Well, we're done a little early.
Not really.
We're doing minutes.
I have seven o'clock right on my.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're right on time.
All right, if it's seven o'clock, we will open up this general Chelmsford Planning Board meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available on demand through Chelmsford Telemedia, and it's also available this evening by Zoom. Should the Zoom go down, then we will continue the meeting after making reasonable efforts to make it come back. And it's seven o'clock, and it's November 13th. We'll open with public input, which is limited to items which are not the, relating to a pending public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak? Yeah?
Evan, before we get to that, is Mike on Zoom yet?
Mike Walsh has joined us, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on. I'll be there, I'll be the, in the room probably in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, if you could just step to the mic and introduce yourself?
Yeah. Sorry. Hi, my name is Farouk Qrani. I'm at Eldorado Road in Chelmsford. I'm here to address with the planning board, and I've been discussing this with Evan, regarding the new ADU regulation that are supposed to be promulgated by the town by February. I know that there's been some delay in the state, you know, issuing guidelines. And I was on the same webinar that Evan was on, and what I'm here to basically request is to be part of the town planning process, to get those bylaws in place, because I want to put an ADU in place, but I also want to make sure that, that the town is satisfied with the regulations in place. And I'm hoping that the planning board is able to establish a joint committee of citizens and members to get those bylaws in place that are both compliant and meet Chelmsford's needs as well. So, again, I've been having discussions with Evan online, and he said, he's just like, I come over here and discuss it with you guys. So I'd love to understand what the planning board is planning to get those bylaws in place by February, which have to be done by law.
So we had discussed it at a previous meeting, that we would wait for the state's guidelines to be handed down, which we thought was going to be, I think, early November, which has come and gone.
The webinar that the speaker references, I don't know if any of you were on that webinar, okay, likely January. The, the guidelines, I think, will be useful, but many communities have begun either reviewing their existing in-law apartment bylaws, or drafting bylaws based upon the knowledge that, you know, that is known to date, with the understanding that the, the guidelines may require some additional revisions. Many of those communities are targeting a spring town meeting. The webinars and the guidelines appear to have a lot of focus on legal questions, such as how do you handle a pre-existing non-conforming use of structure? The answer is fairly simple. You handle it the same way you do now. And there's questions about, well, what about wetlands? What about Title V, things of that nature? Same answers as MBTA zoning. So, you know, I don't know to what extent the guidelines are going to be
Helpful?
definitive for, for Chelmsford's purposes. The state also, as part of every webinar, mentions that towns are not obligated to do anything. If you choose not to adopt any specific town bylaws, then come February 2nd, the building commissioner will administer the state law. So some communities find that a good option, and others obviously don't.
Well, we cannot be more restrictive than the state law, correct?
Correct. You cannot be more restrictive. Right, right. So there's, there seems to be, unlike MBTA zoning, where there are lots of levers to, to kind of pull and customize, there may not be with this, just because of the simplicity of the state law. And I think we, you know, I think we're aware of some of the, the levers that are in place right now. FAR, lot coverage, that process, I think, is well-known. If you have an undersized lot, you're already going to the zoning board. If you can't comply with, with, with FAR, because you're putting on an addition, regardless of what kind of addition, you're going to the zoning board for special permits. One item that is in the state law that I think the planning board will need to consider is whether to require a site plan approval, and if so, for what? Is it for only detached? Is it for, for any type of ADU addition? And all of those kind of questions revolve around, you know, what's, what's reasonable and what is not reasonable. So the board can certainly wait until the guidelines are issued. And I think the town manager expressed, has expressed an interest or ability, or willingness to call a special town meeting if need be, after April. I guess the board could bring this to April, April town meeting, if, if we so desired. And I think what the speaker's asking for is what is the board's process? Is the board contemplating establishing a, a working group or a committee made up of representatives beyond the planning board?
Because the deadline is February.
Thank you.
But currently, we have, like, someone can put in an ADU, because we have it on the books. Like, there's a process right now.
Yes.
So that's not stopping anybody from going, doing that.
Correct. That bylaw will be invalid on February 2nd.
Right. So the question is, do we do something different?
No, 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 but I mean, this gentleman said he's waiting for it, but there is a process now that, if he's really in a hurry, he could go through the process.
We get, we get weekly inquiries from residents.
Thank you, sir.
Local contractors, saying, you know, I understand what I can do now.
Yep.
But what's the town's rules gonna be come February 2nd? And so we can, staff can give them general guidance, but there, you know, there are some, there will be some significant differences between the existing ADU, the existing in-law bylaw, and whatever, you know, the planning board advances to town meeting.
So I.
And again, the interpretation, I think there are some residents who are reading the, the state law, and reading some articles in the media, where they're keying in on by right in any single-family residential zoning district. So some people are interpreting that to mean that any single-family home in town will have the, the by right ability to put an ADU in.
I believe that's correct.
Excuse me, sir. We're not having a conversation. You made your point, and now you can sit down, please.
But, just to wrap this up quickly, what the webinars have said is that's not necessarily the case. So in Chelmsford, where we already have significant number of lots that are undersized, that have trouble putting any addition on because of FAR, those lots will not be by right automatically entitled to put an ADU in. They will still need to continue to apply to the zoning board for that zoning relief. The ADU itself is by right, but dimensional relief is not by right.
Right.
So I think, I think the board understands that. However, as I said.
Can you continue to tell them that, and then in the meantime?
We do.
Perhaps, why do that seems appropriate to me?
I think what some people are hopeful is that, and the, the speaker may be, may fall into this category, is that the ADU bylaw is treated differently, or ADUs are treated differently than, than other types of additions.
Okay, so what I propose is that you continue to tell people, as you have been, in accord with our current zoning, and then that we put this issue on a future agenda to discuss what our process will be if different than accepting the, the regulations from the state.
Should we also invite a member of the ZBA as part of that discussion?
You can. Again, if the planning board wants to take ownership of the, of the ADU to the extent that the law allows, which is site plan review, that can be separate and distinct from the zoning relief. If the, if the board, if the board wants to combine the two, which has some, makes some sense, then the, then where applicable, the zoning board would be doing the site plan review, which, which they essentially do now.
And that would, I, bringing in all, all the ADUs to the planning board would be a lot.
And they don't, right.
Oh, I'm not saying that we would. I'm just saying, have some coordination between the two in this discussion.
In terms of.
Yeah, there's certainly.
Generating a.
Process.
And the zoning board has been, member Glenn Diggs has been actively updating the zoning board. I think he's very much interested in collaborating with the planning board. I will, I will update him accordingly.
He would be a good one. He would be a good one to be a representative if he, if the, if the ZBA is willing to have him be their representative. So maybe I'll reach out to Brian and see if he wants to, if, if he's interested in collaborating with us on that, on this issue. And then our next meeting, do we have something for a work session already on the next meeting? And if so, should we push that?
We, from tonight, starting at 6:30, you have progress of regulatory, and then you're, and then you transition to a work session. Originally, you penciled in the BAYOD.
Yeah.
We could, you know, we could add, we could add other topics.
What do people think about adding this topic on for the work session next week?
We could.
I'm fine with that.
What do you think, Mike?
Fair enough.
We have to keep track of time, though.
Yep. So maybe we could do a half an hour on this topic and an hour on the BAYOD?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can I recommend an hour each? We're not going to be able to get much done in a half hour.
Okay, an hour each.
The ADU discussion shouldn't even take 30 minutes. I mean, there's.
Yeah.
Only a couple of questions that really need conversation at this point.
Conversation for us.
Yeah. You know, to what extent does the planning board want to be involved? Just because the state, just because the law says site plan doesn't mean that the planning board has to do site plan. It also doesn't mean the bylaw needs to require a site plan at all. So those are the few local, local decisions to be made.
Would you be able to, I know you sent us some other towns' plans. I didn't, I didn't look at them because I thought, I was still waiting for the.
Players for?
For the state.
I think I sent you the, the Mass Works grant awards list.
No, you sent us, I thought you sent us a couple towns' ADU.
Yeah, examples of town, other town ADU.
Oh, I'll resend that. I know what you're referring to.
Were those new ones or old ones?
Old ones.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they're old, they're current ones.
I think the list includes either existing that comply, or new ones as well. There's a bunch of towns where they, where they believe they're existing.
Where they think they're working towards complaints with the.
Yep, I'll send that out, I'll resend that out, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Now, just for clarification, that's not a public comment work session, correct?
No, work sessions are not public comment.
So we would be able to ask for public comment after we get something drafted?
Yep. So we'll try and get something drafted, and then we'll put it up as a.
Topic on a future meeting.
Topic on an agenda to which we will take public comment. Is that in accord with everyone?
Yep.
Mike Walsh, do you agree? Oh.
He agrees.
Just on cue.
I agree.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak during the public input? Okay. Then we have administrative review. We have endorsement of the Mylar plans for Parkhurst Road. That doesn't really require anything.
Just, just a motion to endorse, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll physically endorse them.
Move to endorse.
I second.
Motion to endorse by Mike Raisbeck, second by Chris Lavalley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the record, the board is, all members are currently present. Mike Walsh has entered the room.
I have that noted, 7:15.
At 7:15. Okay. Next up, we have 150 North Road, endorsement of the Mylars.
So with us tonight is Chris Fazadin. He was the, the project representative during the planning board proceedings. As you recall, your decision requires that final plans via the Mylars be endorsed. We also attached the, the town clerk certified no appeals on the, for the decision, so that procedurally, the board is, is aware that the, that the Mylars can be endorsed.
So no appeals were made?
So, an appeal has been filed. It's been filed per, per, in accordance with the zoning bylaw, provisions of the zoning bylaw, with the zoning board of appeals. And so, all of these steps have been forwarded to council prior to action being taken. So council reviewed the planning board's decision, and standard, your standard language in your decision references appeals to be taken per the State Zoning Act. The provisions within the State Zoning Act refer to an appeal to the, to the court system. So that appears to be why council recommended or advised the town clerk that they could certify that no appeals were taken. Simultaneously, town council is aware that a local appeal has been submitted. As I mentioned, that local appeal is in accordance with provisions in our zoning bylaw, which do not make any distinction between an MGL procedure. It appears to provide a more open-ended local appeal process. So that, that, that appeal is scheduled for December 5th. And obviously, you know, councils will be there, and, you know, we'll see how that unfolds. At this point, the applicant is aware that they're proceeding at their own risk. Endorsing of the Mylars doesn't give them any rights to move forward. There's, there's other provisions in the planning board decision, such as land disturbance permits, NIPD's permits, a variety of other. NIPD's permits, a variety of other requirements that are required to be in place before any road control goes in place, any tree cutting goes in place, any land disturbance takes place.
So, just to clarify, the appeal to the ZBA, it's to the ZBA, correct?
Correct.
So that is an appeal of a decision made by the building. I forget what the official title is, whether it's not inspector, but-
Commissioner.
Commissioner, or whatever. Thank you.
So it's a good question.
So they're not actually appealing our site plan approval, right? They're appealing something that has been, some determination that's been made out of that office related to this. Is that correct?
As I understand it, they are appealing the decision of the planning board to the zoning board of appeals. This is based upon Section 195-102, powers of the Board of Appeals, number one, number one, two, three, and four. And I believe the pertinent provision is number one here, to hear and decide applications for special, not that one, I'm sorry, to hear and decide appeals or petitions for variances from the terms of the chapter with respect to particular land or structures as set forth in 40A. And then three, to hear and decide appeals taken by any person aggrieved by reason to inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action. So, the building commissioner hasn't made any formal determinations. If you recall, even the determination related to the Dover, whether this was a Dover use or not, wasn't made formally in writing by the building commissioner. The planning board, I think, engaged council on that question. So the planning board process made that determination. So again, so as I understand it, and again, council's involved in all of this, and there's a variety of legal mechanisms at play here, but it's clear that the applicant believes that the way our zoning bylaw is written, that they have the right to make the appeal.
Okay.
That will be discussed further on December 5th.
Okay. I mean, it would be clearer to me if they felt that, for example, the building commissioner did not take an action that he should take, because then that would be-
No action's been requested. That's why I mentioned it.
Okay. So that'll be interesting to hear how this turns out, because people just can't decide to appeal planning board decisions to the ZBA.
You're picking up on a number of the legal, legal, unique, you know, legal, unique legal aspects to this.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, Chris is with us this evening. This is really a purely administrative action of a Chris, you know, I asked Chris to join us, you know, just in case there were any questions of him.
Okay.
We'll be looking for a motion to endorse those Mylars.
So, just a quick question. Can, since this is going in front of the board on December 5th, what happens if we don't take this action now? Can we move it after that?
I don't recommend you do that. I mean, the Mylars are an administrative item. They comply with the planning board decision. Any and all revisions that were required as part of your decision are reflected in the Mylar. You know-
And isn't there a timeline as well for that?
To endorse Mylars? I mean, it's at the request of the applicant, once they comply with the planning board's decision, which they have, which brings them to endorsement of the Mylar. What they do with the endorsement of the Mylar, you know, they could, they could, they could, they could use it to advance the project, they could use it to advance financing, there's a variety of reasons why someone would, you know, want to get Mylars endorsed. You know, I think the proceedings under the planning board decision and what is scheduled to take place on the 5th, I think are separate and distinct at this point. And the reason I'm saying that is because if council thought that there was any connection, he would not have advised the clerk to certify no appeals were taken, which is, I think, is the only reason that endorsement of the Mylars is on your agenda. So that's the only way I can answer the question, is that they're legally entitled to it based upon complying with everything that they need to comply with up to date.
All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I move that we accept the, endorse the Mylar plans.
I'll second.
Motion by Chris Lavalley, second by Mike Raisbeck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, because I voted against this.
Okay. Okay, so it's six in favor, one opposed.
And I have those physically here tonight.
And Anita's opposed, and we don't have anyone on roll call, so we don't have to do, I mean, on Zoom, so we don't have to do a roll call. Okay. Lastly, we have another A and R, we have an A and R pertaining to 7 to 9 Walter G. Weedy Street. I don't know if I say that correctly or not.
Weed Street.
Weedy?
Weed.
Weed.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Brian Malisi with Haley Ward. We have submitted an approval not required or an A and R plan for a parcel property on Walter G. Weedy Street, across the street from the old Glenview. It's a fairly simple interior lot line change, meets all dimensional regulations. We're just asking for endorsement of the A and R plan. I can walk you through it if you would like.
I would love that.
If I may approach the screen. The old Glenview parcel is over here. There's a sewer pump station at the corner of Princeton Street and Walter G. Weedy Street here. If you've been by lately, there's a couple of duplexes that have recently been built. The old property line, and there's a diagonal to it. We are creating this new property line here, creating this little parcel that will go to 7 and 9, and 3 and 5 will have the remainder of it. Just was at the request of a potential buyer for one of the units on 7 and 9, just to kind of straighten things out a little bit.
Hmm. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I should say it doesn't affect frontage whatsoever. The areas meet, again, dimensional requirements for the underlying zone.
And setbacks on the line.
Just wondering why they didn't, if that's the case, why didn't they just draw a line straight perpendicular to the street?
We'd suggested not messing with any of the frontages, and it was really just to create a somewhat parallel line with the unit 7 and 9.
Okay.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I would move that we approve the A and R, grant the A and R, I think is what it is.
Without-
No determination as to zoning.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next up, we have a new public hearing, 66 Parkhurst Road, Bavani Boston LLC requesting to change the use of a tenant space from retail to a fast food restaurant resulting in an increase in the required parking. This project requires site plan review per Section 195-104.1 of the zoning bylaw and any other zoning relief deemed necessary. The site is located in the CC District as shown in parcel ID map 32 block 109 lot 1 and consists of approximately 18.5 acres.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, members of the board. Here, Al Waisman, the architect of the project and the owner of the new L C, Hardy Patel. We are requesting here the board the change of use of our retail to a fast food restaurant. We are increasing our parking demands, but the complex still has enough parking to supply the new, the new use. It's going to be a fast food restaurant with 50 users, and yeah, that's pretty much what we're requesting for.
So this space initially was retail?
Yes.
Or was it?
It's a soap store.
Was retail?
Retail.
It was the-
Soap store, both soap.
The what?
Both, soap.
Above City Soap, the soap place.
Soap.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was the video, the GameStop.
It was at some point, GameStop.
The parking calculations, is that, Evan, is that inclusive of the new, the recent Walmart changes?
I don't know. They just submitted an ALTA survey plan, and he said that this is reflective, I was looking for the date of the ALTA plan.
Yes, as far as WS development, this is the current with the new change with the Walmart. So this should be fairly new.
Okay.
And we have, we submitted also the plans that show the parkings compared to the new location of the site, of the restaurant.
So what is the difference in the number of parking spaces between the current use and the use that you're proposing?
So our new demand is going to be 47, so it's still, the center still has seven parkings available.
So seven additional parking spaces.
I noticed in the narrative, you're using disposable plates, bowls, and silverware. I know it's not in our purview, but my recommendation would be to work with the sustainability committee, or the recycling committee and the sustainability manager to see what can be done with recycling and those types of plant-based materials for the disposable.
Go on. I would agree.
So we don't see a lot of these? Just to clarify, it's not coming to the board simply because of the change of use. It's coming to the board because the change of use triggers additional parking.
Special permit for parking.
Right.
Yep.
I just wanted everyone to be aware, because there's plenty of businesses that come and go, that don't go to the board. If this was retail at a retail, you would not have seen it. Okay. And I think you have some letters?
Yes. From Public Works, Sheila Joyce, project engineer. The engineering department has performed a review of the application for the change in use of a tenant space of 66 Parkhurst Road submitted for the applicant. Bavani Boston LLC, the following contents of the submission were reviewed for appropriateness of method and accuracy as well as for compliance with the Town of Chelmsford Stormwater bylaw, Town of Chelmsford Stormwater Management Regulations, Division 3 Sewer Capacity and Connection Restriction. Sewer comments, DPW approves the sewer flow transfer from the former Applebee's Restaurant, currently Chase Bank, to the proposed Jay Bavani Restaurant, per communication between town engineer and Ian Sloan of WS Asset Management. From 9/10/24 to 10/2/24, acknowledged with the owner's authorization letter, DPW would allow a credit of up to 2,500 GPD based on the current 10-year usage history for the building as of October 1st, 2024. As stated in the owner's authorization letter, the applicant understands that this credit is a dwindling resource and not a fixed value to be submitted to DPW prior to the issuance of a building permit. The proposed seating plan of the restaurant showing the tables and seat counts, the proposed sewer usage and designation from Title V shown on the plan set, it gives an example. And then recommended general conditions of approval, the DPW shall monitor and enforce sewer flow limitations and impose penalties for violations thereof in accordance with the town sewer policy. Contractor must be licensed in the Town of Chelmsford to perform work in the right-of-way. Licensed contractor required for grease trap installation. A trench permit shall be obtained for the work described. New exterior grease trap from Department of Public Works. If applicable, all handicap parking signs must meet the requirements of MGL Part 1, Title 7, Chapter 40, Section 22A, and clearly legible, and be clearly and legibly display the following message, handicap parking special plate required. Unauthorized vehicles may be removed at owner's expense. And then from the building commissioner, Jose Negron, dear sir and madam, please be advised that for the proposed change of use from retail to fast food restaurant at the above regarded address, such change increases the safety hazards of the building and occupants and need to comply with all current building code and possibly sprinkler system requirements. Also, need to comply with parking to include ADA compliancy, a compliant. An occupancy load calculation by a registered design professional should be provided for approval by the building commissioner. And, let's see, and we have two letters with no concerns from the Board of Health and the Treasurer Collector's Office. And that concludes the letters.
Who was it that put the interwriting about the grease trap? That wasn't the Board of Health?
That was Public Works, engineer from Public Works. Sheila Joyce, project engineer.
I have a question about the sewer dwindling resource. I don't really understand that, do you?
I think their comments in reference to the Walmart site in its entirety, that, and as I read it, the 2,500 gallon transfer was from the former Applebee's. And I think what, I think what DPW's member is saying is that there's not, there's not a lot of any additional transfers available for that site. So I think they're making it, they're making the property owner aware that this is likely a one-time opportunity.
Oh, so it's not dwindling across time? It's dwindling across the property?
Yes, I think that's what the context of the letter is, that it's property-specific.
I see. That makes sense. I've been wondering about when a restaurant closed, what happened to that capacity, so.
Want to take public comment?
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about this project? Seeing none, is there any, any questions from the board?
Not here. No.
Mike? John?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to, sorry for the omission. We have one from the fire prevention office. I just wanted to read, sorry for that. From Captain Josh Abbott, Fire Prevention Office. Dear members of the board, regarding the application submitted for the site plan review for 66 Parkhurst Road, Jay Bavani Restaurant, this office finds the following. All pertinent codes including but not limited to NFPA standards, MGL Chapter 148, 527 CMR, Mass State Building Code, and Town of Chelmsford bylaws must be conformed to for the design and construction of the proposed fast food restaurant. Plans must be submitted to this office as part of the building, building process for approval. Separate stamped fire protection plans, fire alarm and sprinkler must be submitted separately for approval by an appropriately licensed professional. All inspections must be completed prior to use. This office would approve of this project under these conditions, and we ask that you make this letter part of your approval process and public record.
And did you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. No, I'm good, thank you.
Joel?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Anita? Chris?
No.
I have one quick question, the parking, the increase of seven spots, that increases the need for one handicap, is that right?
So I rephrase, so the seven is still the net parking that the complex still has available?
I'm sorry?
So the seven is net, that's the extra parking that we have after our use.
The change of use is triggering 47 new spaces.
Correct.
I understand that, but if for seven additional spots-
I understand you're correct. So as part of the building permit, Jose Negron, the building commissioner, will review for compliance with the number of ADA spaces.
Okay.
Because you're familiar with that, that side of the plaza, there's a large bank of ADA handicapped accessible spaces.
Okay.
They may have enough, if not, they'll add.
But I mean, for them to be handicapped appropriate, they'd have to be in sufficient proximity to the location.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, in our site plan that we submitted that shows our unit compared to the general, we sit in front of the unit.
Okay, perfect. All right. So-
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Okay, motion by Chris, second by Mike Raisbeck. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I would move that we approve the- I would move that we approve the, uh, special permit.
With the conditions.
With the conditions of the fire and the...
Yeah, with the conditions according to DPW and fire and...
Zoning.
Uh, zoning.
All letters.
Yeah, all letters. Thank you.
Okay, second. Motion by Chris, second by Anita. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a continued public hearing pertaining to Forpaillet Drive, requesting construction of sixteen new parking spaces with associated site improvements. I'm going to defer the reading of the rest of the permit requirements unless someone objects. Casey?
All right. Casey Ferrer with Howard Stein Hudson. So when we last left, about a month ago, we kind of set out on a path of, and I know this, this board was very interested in the answer to why now? Why is it a concern now? Why are we forced to do something at this point? So we dove in. I met with Tony Rapucci. I met with Fire Prevention Officer Captain Josh Abbott. And it, it boils down to there was a complaint at one point or another. And then there was also a response needed at the cul-de-sac for, for, you know, one thing or another, and they could not access based on the parking that was in there. So it's a public safety. Additionally, we ventured down the path of, well, if I could show you that, you know, we can make fire access work, could we buy a piece of the cul-de-sac so that it could be as part of this property and we could maintain it as is? The path that was set out to be able to do so was not, um, there was no assurance to it. We'd be able to, to pursue it, but we'd need to get approval through select board, through town meeting. DPW would require subdivision plans, which would be, you know, additional expense, which ultimately could just be turned down at any point. So with that being understood, we decided, you know, it's, it's best for us just to move forward in, in the path that we have, as much as we don't want to construct this. It's really the only safer economic opportunity for us. So with that being said, we did make a few changes to the plans as part of, or in response to some of the concerns that we heard at the last meetings, mostly related to stormwater. So in the stormwater review, and Sheila did send a DPW letter for this, this, I think this afternoon, where she did fully review stormwater, where she states that it meets all relevant standards. At the previous meeting, we had one overage, was a flow rate in the hundred-year storm event. We took a, a new look at how the stormwater was being accepted, and we just increased a small portion of the pond on the top right side of it, which in turn is going to remove some of the Castores pavement. We increased that size. We were able to, to obtain a reduction in flow in that hundred-year storm. So now in every storm event, we do result in a net reduction in both flow and volume off the site. So it meets all stormwater standards at this point. Additionally, we did hear concerns about the direction, and I believe, Joel, we had a discussion about this at the last meeting, was the direction of which we outflow from the pond. So while I cannot move the weir itself just due to flood storage and the berm that goes around it, I was, I, what we did was we took an overflow structure so that we could redirect just a portion of it, so that maybe we could disperse some of the outflow and not have it all directed at that, that drainage ditch that's adjacent to, or between the Dunshire properties and our property. So essentially, instead of just having the pond fill up all at once, then spill over into one location, which is to that drainage ditch in between the, our property and the Dunshire properties, we have an intermittent outflow, which is as it rises up in the stormwater pond, it'll begin outflowing at a lower, at a lower rate, but to a different location. That just allows us to kind of spread out the outflow instead of being at one spot, which is directly to that drainage ditch. I did think, after watching back the last meeting, I may not have painted the best picture of the post-development. I think it's important that I emphasize the fences on both sides of the property are to remain. We don't plan on removing the existing fences. The only fencing that we're removing is going to be the fence that crosses the back of the property, and that's only because we have to get past that portion of the property with the, the parking. So we're still screened in. The parking is still screened by the fence that's adjacent to the property. And as we remove that fence that goes down the back of the property, we're going to use those panels that are still in good condition to repair other portions of the fence that have deteriorated or have lost fence panels. So I just wanted to paint that picture a little bit more clearly, because as I watched it back, I don't even think I touched on it. So there is going to be a fence between the Dunshire properties and our property, and currently that fence stands at six feet tall. So it is adequate to block, or at least help screen the parking that would be taking place in the rear. With that, I believe that wraps up the changes and any explanation. I will, I don't know if you guys have had the chance to read it, but Tony did, Tony, the town engineer, did write a letter to this board highlighting how this came about. There's one portion of that letter that I think is very important. It is that while we may maintain parking for now, they have instructed the applicant or the property owner to seek an engineering firm to create a permanent solution that removes the vehicles from the right-of-way. So there is a will and a need for us to remove these, these cars from the right-of-way entirely. We are not allowed to continue parking there once we can figure this out. So with that, I'll open it up for comments and questions.
What was the area of the right-of-way on the drawing? Can you show?
What was that?
The area of the right-of-way you're talking about, that the building inspector's talking about?
So you're talking about...
The whole cul-de-sac?
Yes.
So they want no parking at all in there?
Right, so basically said for now, we can use parallel parking.
We could continue to use parallel parking so long as it does not interfere with the apparatus turns around the right-of-way. I don't know if you've been to that cul-de-sac. It's pretty tight. The ladder can't make it one way or another, whether there's cars there or not. So for now, they're allowing parallel, but the letter does instruct us that we have to move all cars off of the right-of-way for a permanent solution.
Is that a public parking street?
I believe public parking is allowed on all streets, but they don't want it to be a primary source of parking. I think it has to be designated as no parking for it to not allow parking.
Thank you. Casey, can you touch a little bit more on the expansion of the, the pond as well?
Sure.
As you mentioned at last night's meeting, and I want to make sure that...
Yep. So this little portion back here, we had originally planned to keep all of the Castores parking lot because we didn't want to be responsible for removing it as they paved it. We would rather them have to remove it and bring it back into compliance, which we're still going to work on with Castores, to have them remove the remainder of their parking that's on our property.
I'm sorry, Casey, what number is Castore? What number, Tinsley Road?
One hundred.
One hundred, okay. Thank you.
So, but in order to achieve full stormwater compliance, where we're not requesting a de minimis impact, where we're just fully compliant with all reductions, we added an increase on this right-hand side here, this top right corner, where we're going to go over the existing Castores parking lot, or pavement, take out a portion of it, and add it to the, the drainage pond.
And that's going to accomplish?
That allows us to meet all of the stormwater requirements to the T. So prior, before, we had an increase in rate in the hundred-year storm event, by I think it was point zero-two CFS. So adding this extra pond area allows the pond to stage.
Be able to absorb more.
Just enough. Not absorb more, but slow it down more.
So, I mean, I guess it's beyond the purview of this board, but I, I'm interested. Like, how much do we expect the new FEMA flood planes?
Change this? I was thinking that.
To change this?
Yes.
For all intents and purposes, there won't be any changes. As it relates to this particular property, there are no map changes. And then as we quickly discussed, this is a parking lot project. I'm not a floodplain expert, but my understanding is...
That's allowed.
They have to maintain existing grading and topography.
So the requirement is that the existing storage that's on site, we have to maintain the existing flood storage on site. We have provided a grading plan and a cut-fill analysis that proves out that from that flood elevation of one-oh-three, all the way down to our lowest level of disturbance, which is Contour Ninety-Nine, from between those four feet of contours, we provide the same storage or more in the...
Foot by foot, right.
Foot by foot. That is correct. And then additionally, on top of that, our outflow is a total, or a net reduction in volume out of the, the site.
Do you, do you know to what extent DPW's review did the, the floodplain review as well?
I don't know if they looked at that. I don't think it states it in their letter whether they did or did not.
Chris, what are the, what did they say last night?
What did conservation?
Yeah.
In terms of...
What would they say about the, the backup that we had a discussion at the last meeting regarding? The outflow being blocked and all that? Are they going to, are they addressing that?
They can't. I mean, it's with the state.
So there's no one from the town that can address that for the neighbors?
Not really. It's, it's a state issue. They've encouraged folks to reach out to the state reps. But it really is a state issue at the Route Three culvert.
Yeah, because it's culvert that's owned by the state, so you can't go messing around with the state's culvert as much as we'd like to.
So you can't clean it up? The town can't clean it up?
I don't think so.
No.
Can't touch it unless it's an imminent hazard to health or safety.
But it's flooding.
I, I don't think it's an issue of being cleaned or not cleaned. I think it's physically undersized for the amount of water.
That's it.
If we were just cleaning it out...
Cleaning it up, I think he meant make it bigger.
So I thought there was a discussion last week that some of the flooding was caused by being blocked.
So I thought that as well. And so I went out there to look at it, and I think what Evan just said is correct, is that on Dunshire Drive, there's two four-foot pipes that go underneath Dunshire Drive. That travels down into the wetlands, which then outlets to that stream, which then goes to three-A, which has just a single, singular, four-foot wide, four-foot tall culvert. So you're basically going from double the size to half the size.
And that's not part, that's not the town's responsibility to fix it?
No. We, we can't.
I couldn't.
We can't work on their culvert.
Yeah. It's their culvert.
It's their culvert. But I think Representative Elliott is working on it.
Oh, is he working on it?
I think he is. Not the culvert, but getting the, to do something about the culvert. He might be able to do something. Can you show where the outfall, where the new outfall is going to be the sort of interim?
Evan, can you go to the grading? Next point then. So this is the, we, we adjusted the weir over just slightly, but then we added this concrete str, might be concrete, might be an outflow structure here, which has a pipe outlet that goes diagonal more towards the well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
For that discharge structure, does that impact that pond's ability to hold water and, and let it percolate into the ground?
Yeah, so the lower that you have an outlet, the less the, the pond is forced to infiltrate. So it's going to release water at an earlier time, but it still meets all requirements for each storm event, two-year, ten-year, twenty-five, and hundred-year storm event for net reductions.
Is there a way to raise that outflow up closer to the weir levels so that it's...
So the problem with doing that is the higher you bring, they call it an orifice for the structure, the higher you bring the orifice, the higher the pond stages, the faster the water's going to come out once it overtops that orifice, so then we lose our ability to control the flow vol, or the flow and the rate reduction out of the pond.
Yeah. You want it gradual.
Right. So the earlier we can do it, the more gradually it'll hold, it'll release it.
Okay.
And I do want to also prioritize the fact that, you know, our requirement is not to stop the flooding that occurs on Dunshire. As much as we empathize with people experiencing flooding, our job and our requirement through both state regulations and local regulations is just to not compound it and not make it worse. So you have drainage calculations in front of you. You have peer review of those drainage calculations that agree that as a result of the project, there will not be a increase in volume, which would lead to an increase in flooding. It is all a net decrease.
Is there any way to make it better?
Without fixing the culvert, you're not going to fix the issues that they have. By reducing the amount of volume that's coming off of our site, we're making it better to the amount that we can. And that's about all we can do.
You're redirecting it in two directions and so...
Well, we're allowing more of it to infiltrate now than we were previously, than the existing site does.
And that's because we went into that other site and grabbed that other piece of it?
We always met the recharge requirements and the net reduction in volume. All that, all the making it bigger did was allow us to reduce the rate. And the rate, while the increase was very minimal, is still a requirement of the state's standards to, to reduce. But the rate doesn't necessarily compound flooding, the volume.
The pond is holding the water, so it infiltrates more, as opposed to running across it. Right now, it's sheet floating across, sheet flowing across the property. So it's only what it happens to catch as it's passing over. But if you put a pond there, you're holding the water there, so it can infiltrate more. So, and all of that, but you're redirecting it so that instead of it flowing across the property down along the whole back of those properties, now you're at least in an interim, putting it more towards the wetlands, and then eventually, as it overtops in high flood event, high rain events, then it's going to be at that corner of the property. That, that is an improvement over what it is right now. It's not, it doesn't fix the flooding problem, but it does improve at least the way it is right now. Sure.
And now the, looking at the Stormwater Standard Nine, O and M, contributing watersheds with high sediment concentrations may require inspections monthly, including at least four times a year. So that will be the responsibility of the owner?
Correct. So I believe it makes its way into your decisions as well, Evan, but I know in the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions, we're required to provide all of our maintenance receipts directly to Conservation Commission and DPW. I believe it makes its way into the decision as well.
Ours go to DPW.
Right. So we, in the past, it's been that upon request, we have to provide all our maintenance receipts. That would basically require DPW to ask us for our receipts. It's since been changed through the local stormwater regulations that now for every approval, we have to, on a yearly basis, give our maintenance receipts to DPW instead of them chasing us for them. So that basically, that helps make sure that every project approved through these boards is maintaining as required, or else they could face, that they're not in compliance with their approvals.
And we don't have the updated DPW letter yet, right?
Received it this afternoon.
I don't recall even receiving an email on it.
She might have just sent it to David.
What's on?
I, I'm not sure if, actually Evan was copied on it, but I know that the updated letter was sent this afternoon. I can forward it to you. But, uh, it's unfortunate if it was not sent to you.
I have a few other questions not related to the stormwater. Casey, the Board of Health letter mentioned that the current dumpster pad is not in... Casey, the Board of Health letter mentioned that the current dumpster pad is not in compliance, if I remember correctly. But the, but you guys mentioned that you're not changing anything there.
I thought the Board of Health letter stated that it would require an enclosed dumpster, to which we are not moving the existing enclosed dumpster, I think they just did not see it on the plan, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah, just, I do not see the dumpster location clearly listed on the new plans.
In the paragraph above it, it says this property currently has a dumpster which does, oh, sorry, which does meet, sorry, I read that wrong.
I was gonna say, that's something I would, that would have caught my eye.
Sorry about that. The snow storage, um, is in two locations towards the front. We've requested this of other projects, but could you guys place no store, no snow storage signs along that, the bur, the fence and the, the pond part of the parking lot?
The berm?
Yeah. So that the contractors don't pile up the snow storage there.
Absolutely.
And then could you also put that, um, snow storage information as part of the O and M? Cause and, I noticed it's not in there and on sensitive areas like this, it'd be good to have that so that the contractors can actually see it, and, cause they'll never go back to the plans.
Sure.
And then in terms of overflow, snow storage like house, is that written in the decision, like, that it's their responsibility to?
We even, we added a note to the plans as well, that states that any, uh, s- snow accumulation in excess of what can be handled on site must be removed by the owner.
You can, you can include a condition. It's really up to the board. Some, some decisions have specifically included that.
I would like that in this case because of the
Harmless.
Delicate area.
And Casey, I also noticed that it's Cape Cod berm on the parking lot. Any chance that that could be granite curb? To avoid damage during plowing?
I understand, well, we can review the cost with the applicant and see if it's something that we can make happen.
At least on the, the edges closest to the, the, um, where it'll come down into the stream area.
So you are?
Ideally around the whole parking lot, but at minimum, there would be good.
And I also, I'm, I know we discussed this at the last time and I, um, I guess I just am bothered by the wildlife tree, um, removal. I mean, can you refresh me what you're taking down, what you're putting up and, um?
Sure.
So.
Think about if there's any way that could be better.
Evan, if you go to the, um, demolition plan, it should be page two. So right here, so this is that existing fence that crosses the back. Right now, there's a bunch of smaller trees, some larger ones, some of them are already dead, but there's approximately sixteen total to be removed.
One six?
One six, sixteen. We don't have a landscaping plan proposed as part of this. Um, and that is mainly due to the overall cost of the project and trying to keep it in line with what we can actually achieve. You know, while we want to do as much as we can, it has to be realistic within a budget that they have to be able to construct this. Um, so our plan now is we wanna keep the fence as a screening purpose, but we don't have any plan to, or we don't have any ability to commit to trees. We discussed yesterday with conservation, the potential for planting approximately twenty arborvitae trees along, um, that bottom stretch of the parking where it faces Dunshire. Um, just to help in the screening from the people that would be parking on this bottom aisle. Um, but until we review overall cost, we can't commit to that at this time.
I mean, unless it was a condition of the decision.
Right.
In one of the past meetings, there was discussion about the light that was in the cul-de-sac. Have you talked to DPW about that at all to see if they might be able to change that?
I have not talked to DPW about that, all I stated at the last meeting was that it's not our light and I can't do anything with it. Um, if, if the butters who would, who have issue with it want to bring it to DPW and ask them, they're more than welcome to do so.
Evan, is that something we can bring to Christine?
Yeah, I can shoot her an email, um, remind me, is it to dim it or, or shield it?
Shield it, redirect, so it's down, as opposed to in the neighbors' faces.
Okay. And there's one in the cul-de-sac, right?
I think so, yeah.
Right in front of the building, it's on the cell phone pole.
To be in compliance, doesn't it have to be downward?
Dark sky compliant.
I suspect if it were in compliance with all the proposals that we've been talking about, it'd be fine.
Maybe, it might be an older one.
Well, if it's an older one, bring it up.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send an email to, to Christine.
Yeah. Anyone else, anything else?
Public meeting, yeah.
Public, I'm sure there's those of you waiting anxiously.
Hello, everybody, it's, I'm James Starkweather at nineteen Dunshire Drive. And, uh, I'm just a little confused about the letters from the DPW going around because I have a letter from Mr. Rupucci that only required the right-of-way to be respected, and it specifically says parking can be accommodated around the cul-de-sac or in another areas of on-street parking. Nowhere in here does it say it's a temporary solution. And now there's another letter, but mine's dated November seventh, that previous letter was in October.
This one?
Yeah.
That letter.
I have one dated November seventh. And so it seems like the goalposts are changing, and that's not fair to the property owner either. And, um, the other comment is.
It's from last year. Give her a shot.
Oh, my bad, so I stand corrected that the goalpost still changed. There's, there's more than one copies of letters and they're, everyone, they're, they're changing the rules on the, the property owner also. And, uh, can, can, can I get one of the dry stuff up? It doesn't matter which one, I just wanna shut, see the driveway. Haven't heard any comments on the safety of this driveway, because it was, it's a blind driveway if you look at it. You're gonna come down this driveway, door, 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 there's a, there's a, there's a safety risk here of a blind driveway. There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and no one's mentioned anything about the safety of the plant. And the last comment is, the plan doesn't even, you, they have to get a variance for the code, cause, uh, they, they're required by code to have nineteen parking spaces for the eight units. And they're only asking for fourteen in back. So it's not even solving the problem, and we're losing sixteen trees and, and wetlands. When, and if only the DPW could, uh, mark the right-of-way, I think the problem we could solve with paint. There's, there's enough area out front to park fourteen cars, if someone would just paint it. And when, last time I went down there, the DPW hasn't even marked the right-of-way, so it's an arbitrary guess of what, what space they need. And I'm sure there's many, many roads in Chelmsford that a ladder truck cannot turn around in. So to pick on Paylet Drive doesn't seem fair either, thank you very much.
So I actually had a conversation with Tony Rupucci, uh, we could go Thursday.
I'm sorry, you are?
I'm sorry, Michelle Caputo Starkweather, nineteen Dunshire Drive. So I had a conversation with Tony Rupucci because I said, hey, what's going on here? And his statement was, they can't be parking in the middle of the right-of-way, just like you can't park in the middle of Route three A. They can park on the side of the road, there's no problem with that at all. Snow emergencies, of course, anywhere in Chelmsford, you can't park on the side of the road, but other than that, they can park on the side of the road. We have no problem with that. So I'm really curious, the bylaw here says, one ninety-five sixteen A, applicability ends with existing buildings and uses need not comply unless expanded or otherwise changed to increase their parking needs. So I'm curious why I'm hearing from the owner, they're not building a parking lot cause they want to. They're building a parking lot cause they were told they have to, but nobody seems to actually think that they did tell them that. They just said, stop parking in the middle of the right-of-way. The fire engine can't get through when you're parked in the middle of the road. Nobody in my neighborhood wants that parking lot, the owner doesn't wanna spend the money to build a parking lot. Why are we here fussing about building a parking lot, cutting down our wetlands, doing all of this destruction? And how do we put this to bed? Like, make it stop, there's really no reason for this to continue. And I also am gonna just add in my little comment here, oops, sorry, I'm gonna approach the that little, that little outlet there, which I can't see, is actually in the twenty-five-foot no disturbs zone. And that outlet requires a culvert, it requires sticking, it requires a lot of things in the no disturbs zone. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I'm John Kelly, thirty-eight Dunshire Drive. And, um, again, she just spoke, we really don't see why it was, I, the fire chief isn't here. No one's expressed, has anybody received a letter or complaint, is any, are you aware of this? Fire chief hasn't even come to any of the meetings to express any discussion. At last night's meeting with the, um, Conservation Commission, they talked about work being done on Freeman Road. There's houses being built there, there's boats everywhere, there's no way a fire truck can turn, there's no way, even two cars could, if, if a police car went down there, you couldn't even pass it coming in the other direction to get an ambulance out. So there's no, no sense to say that this road is any more restricted than any other to, any other road in this town, there's lots of restrictions. As far as Dunshire Drive and the culvert is concerned, I'm familiar with every piece of blockage along that river. Right? Dunshire Drive is a, is a private, is an individual culvert. We have, it was built with a asphalt pavement to drain our properties into the brook. Dunshire, Deep Brook has been there for years. It should be, we haven't had, we have not had rain for two months now. That brook should be dry. Yet there's still a heavy flow going through there, because there's so much additional work being down, up, uphill. We've got the asphalt plant, which is growing exponentially, it's grown constantly. It used to go one mile up Route three north, and now goes nearly a mile and a half. We've got all kinds of, there's all kinds of construction on Dun, on Dunstable Road, all those buildings and culverts and that was all open land, conservation land, absor, absorbent land, it's now a straight street down to Dunst, Dunstable Road. Deep Brook runs all the way to Flint's Corner, along with other tributaries. We have more water coming down there than we've ever had before. We just had all of last fall, last winter after a lot of work, we just had all of Dunshire Drive reconstructed, all of the culverts that he speaks of. Two, those are the ones that are different, cause we have two four-foot pipes at the exit and two five-foot pipes at the inlet. These are guaranteed for a hundred-year storm. They didn't last two months, I don't wanna bore you with the pictures, but I'm glad to give you copies of it. The inlet pipes, which are five-foot pipes, are completely underwater, causing flooding on all these, all of, um, houses on the outside of the perimeter. The four-foot pipes are still had a foot of clearance above, above for water to pass through. Dunshire Drive, I can show you pictures, we sandbag all the time, my backyard floods monthly. It's saturated. I cannot comprehend how this parking lot, which is thousands of square feet of absorbent grass, can now be taken, turned into pavement, retained in a what, a two-foot deep pond? That pond is gonna fill in with leaf and debris, about two inches a year. It's gonna overflow, not directly into Deep Brook, not directly into the marmadale, it's gonna flow into these people's backyards. Any blockage that you talk about, there are five blockages beyond our culvert. There's the one at, um, there's one right behind Cowgill's, there's a footbridge, used to be a carriage bridge that nobody's aware of. There's the culvert at three A, which you say we can't do anything about, we're working on that. But part of the reason that we can't do anything about that, because the jumps it owns, the culvert just beyond that are by, um, China Blossom, which is even smaller. The state is reluctant to do anything to that overflowing culvert, because it makes no point if the water beyond it's gonna back over the road anyhow. Then we also have the blockage at the railroad crossing down by South Wall Field, and there's also a footpath that takes a forty, thirty to forty-foot wide stretch of Deep Brook and restricts it to five and a half feet. By making all these little restrictions in the water, we spread Deep Brook out over a shallow long portion of, a large portion of property. That water is detained in order for us to absorb, keep it out of our drivies, out of our doors, out of our, out of our parking lots, out of our garages. If, if you don't allow, you add any more water to that, you're filling up those retention areas more and more. I don't care how you put it, you're putting more retention in there, they don't drain as fast, we flood faster, more often, more often, more sooner. Last thing. If I can approach.
What, what, um?
On the plan?
Yep.
You see where it says, this area is designated for snow removal? That's area doesn't even consist of two parking spaces, right? Now, I don't know if any of you know anything about plowing. A truck has to come down that driveway, and you could put all the signs you want and make all the regulations you want. You can't, they can't go down to the other end and push the snow this way, it just doesn't happen. The plow's gonna go and it's gonna be constantly pushing it towards that end, especially when there's cars parked in there. And who would plow and park, who would pile snow against a building? And then that's a hazard in itself, so all that snow, all that salt, all the oil, all the gasoline, all the transmission fluid, windshield washing, all the hazardous material is gonna be pushed into that retention pond. All right? And fed directly into Deep Brook. Beaver dams, if you wanna walk over there, you don't even have to get your feet wet, I can take you in the backyard and let you pet the beavers, I can show you the dams they live on. Right? The primary cause here, if you were gonna preserve wetlands, this is your chance to do it. What you'll really be doing is saving these people's backyards. There's also a health issue. I, I've worked with the Mass Mosquito Control Cathedral, um, and I'm working with them again. The last time they, they came and dug out the culvert around us, and it was in nineteen eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Right? They found, we're finding that mosquitoes, reptile virus, and we're spraying chemicals all over the place, we're eliminating school sports during, during nighttime hours, all because of mosquitoes. You don't think that this is going to cause any more problems with mosquitoes? Which is a health hazard. Maybe the board of health should look into that also. And last but not least, last night, one of these, the Board of Conservation said, was they were granted permission for someone to put a pole in the backyard. And in order to move 12, I think, an 8-by-12 shed, they said, well, we're going to make the requirements that this shed... We wanted a buffer around it so that it would absorb the rain coming off the roof. A 12-foot shed would be absorbed by the rock. And we could store no hazardous material in there. By that, they meant under maybe a can of gasoline for a long walk. We're taking thousands of square feet here of porous land, which absorbs water now. And we're going to put, again, hazardous chemicals, plus the hazards of the asphalt. And we're going to collect them there and run it off into a pond, which is going to overflow and going to not be maintained. And it's going to go into our backyards. If there was a way that you could make it go towards 3A and into the brook somewhere else. But all the businesses on 3A, whether it's the used car dealership, Castori's, I think it's a nail salon, that's all asphalt that goes in our direction. And it's stopped by just a slight brim and a bit of stone, crushed stone. There's no way you can explain to me, please, if it's possible, how we could eliminate thousands of feet of absorbent grass, which is basically a buffer we want in our wetlands, and replace it with asphalt. And then take all this hazardous material, all this runoff, and put it into somebody else's backyard. Thank you. Unless you have any other questions about the other obstacles. I can tell you that people who are currently involved with removal of... We're trying to get some work done with that construction at Saltwell, the footbridge. Also, the Mass... David Zaire, who's the Mass Restoration Scientist. He has come and looked over a lot of the brook with me. And they're looking to fund it for grant money to have it done. He's explained to us that this is, and he quotes, "Deep Brook is a cold-water fish reef, good for fish habitat." The Marmac River, located downstream of Deep Brook, is a diamecous fish run. Fish that go between freshwater and saltwater. The downstream barrier is located in open space and protected. I suspect that for us to do anything about it, he says, I would anticipate Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, 401 qualifying certificate, US Army Corps of Engineer, and on and on and on. That they want just for us to do removal of debris downstream.
Hello. Sarita Fernandez, 27 Dunshire Drive. I want to say, first of all, I appreciate all of your comments. I think they've all been great, as well as my neighbors. And also the extra work that the engineering firm has done. Because there's a few things that they did, I think... I like that they looked at some of the stuff. It would have been appreciative if there was more that could be done. A lot of the comments that came up at last night's meeting were surrounding the fact that they don't have enough money to do things. That's really concerning for both myself and my neighbors. Because if that's the reason why they can't do what needs to be done, you know, it's a problem for us because we're in direct relation to it. So I'm going to go over a couple of points and questions and just some comments. The first one is off of the DPW letter, the recent one, the 102824 one, where they're talking about, they're supposed to be parking parallel to on-street parking. That was their request. They have yet to this date parked parallel along that road in the cul-de-sac. It would be great if they did. Lights would be less in my bedroom. So I guess my question to all of you here is, how, if this parking lot goes through, how do we ensure that the overage, that they park parallel along that area and not directly forward? Because they've yet to comply. It's been over a year. And we know that the 14 spaces they have, I provided some pictures before. They have more than that that parks there today. So there will be overage, no matter how this goes. So that's kind of like about that portion. The next part, if you could go to, on that plot plan, the page two. Because I have a couple of questions about this, if I can come up. So this is the one here that's showing all the trees that they talk about that they're removing. The one section of pavement that they're going to ask the restaurant if they can remove is this section right here. But we know that this pavement goes down and it goes all the way up. And it's this whole section. I would like to see if they could get the whole pavement removed. Because some things that that could open up opportunities for is bringing some additional green space. Or something that we've yet to talk about is if this was removed, is there any potential to take some of this retention pond, traverse it a little bit differently, have the outlet come down this way, and keep some of the remaining trees that are here as a buffer? And keep more of a buffer away from this section? And don't put it in our backyards? One of the things that keeps on coming up, they use different terminology for this area here. I've heard intermittent stream. I've heard ditch. Just to clarify, this area here where the water currently flows is on Dunshire Drive's property. We pay taxes for that. We can't use it. That's where the water sits and it goes into our backyards. But that's actually on our property. So they are pouring water into our backyards, no matter how we look at this. But I would like to see, like in the question they asked as well as yesterday, I'd like to actually make it a requirement, if we could, to get them to remove this. And look at an alternate plan, you know, if it's something that could be done. Let me keep it there for a second. Okay. The next thing, if you can go to the last page of this plot plan?
All the way to the bottom?
Yes, please. So if, actually, the one... Yep, if you can go up a little bit. So remember when you're looking at this, this is turned again, right? This is actually facing this way, if you look at the rest of the pages of the drawing. But something on here that they added, that they said to help prevent the water...
Have they rotated properly?
You can leave it... Let's see. Yep, that's correct. So Castori's, the area that they're talking about taking is right here, right, on the pavement? Its elevation is 102 feet. Originally, it was 103 feet in the center, which, yes, water was flowing perpendicular out this way. They're digging that down. They said that they're creating a berm here. It's not clear to me on the drawing, which we can go down in a minute to look what that looks like. Because to me, it looks like a straight path. It still looks like to me that water is going to flow in here. You know, they say it's not, but I'm not clearly understanding how it's going to be diverted out. And that, again, is the untreated water coming in. If you scroll down to the... I think, of the start, if you can flip it again here. They gave you guys a side view. And this is where you can see the berm top being 102 feet. So a question that I have, because between the two design that they previously presented and this design, in the old design, the wear overflow is at 101.5 feet. It's currently at 107 feet. So in the new design, they actually brought this down lower for the overflow. So that means that, what, it's going to hit our backyards a little quicker? I understand that they're diverting, appreciative of that attempt. But as you can see, and we talked about that a little bit earlier, it's 102 feet for this overflow. So it's going to start flowing out earlier into our properties. The question I have about this overflow pipe, I'm not seeing any riprap at the end of this. So what's helping with the soil erosion of what's coming out of this pipe? So that's kind of like a question. But the question to the engineer that I have is, what volume of water did this retention pond in your design hold before it overflowed previously? To your new design, how much volume of water is it holding before it starts coming out into, through this orifice? Because that's obviously going to be the first point. Because even though they added this section, it's not going to hold any water. It's kind of, like you said, he even said it was going to roll off, right? It's going to come down here, give you a little bit, maybe, a surface for the water to go into. But it doesn't... I get that they're holding the water, appreciative. But we're all talking about, like, trees and, you know, making things better. I don't... I think there's other ways that could be done here to do it. Last night and at the previous meeting, like I said before, a lot of things were being brought up about cost, about, you know, they can't do stuff. Well, the fencing, you walk the property, that fencing is falling apart everywhere. The section that was over by me, I actually think I zip-tied a board up because people were walking through. It's really bad. And I was surprised tonight to hear that they said they were going to take some of the good sections from the other side and repair the fence on this side. Because that wasn't what was said last night. Last night, we were told they're not repairing it because they didn't have the funding for it. So, again, I have concerns with maintenance of the property. If they can't afford to maintain their property today, and they said that they're going to maintain the property of the pond because it's a requirement, where else is the property going to suffer? Right? If they can't maintain it today, and we don't make it a requirement that they get these things done, they'll never get done. Like, if we don't ask them to remove that pavement, they won't do it. And that's frustrating, right? And just a quick couple of comments. I know a lot of people have talked about different stuff. The dumpster they have is definitely better than it was before. But there is no proper recycling storage, in my opinion. I think I provided pictures of that before. They have two bins for, I think, eight units. I have two bins for my house that I fill up weekly, right, of recycling. They're constantly being blown over, fall over. And because the fence is in a disrepair in that area, stuff's always getting through. They're trash. Even though it's, like I said, enclosed and good, they never actually shut the fence, like you're supposed to in the bylaws. And it's open. Animals are always dragging stuff out, again. I'd like to see if I could ask to have them come up with a proper recycling portion to be added to this. Because there's no reason why an apartment complex shouldn't have something for people to recycle. Sustainability, right? We're all trying to go after that today. I think that was kind of most of it. They did talk about arborvitae's last night. We all try growing those in our area. They're not really a great viable option. I still would like to see them do something for helping, you know, provide a little bit of, you know, wildlife protection, if this is the direction that this thing goes. But, you know, overall, I'd really like to see that pavement gone and seeing another possibility of bringing the water a different direction, if possible. So that's my stuff. So, thank you.
Hello. Amelia Caputo Starkweather, 19 Dunshire Drive. Last night at Conservation, I spoke pertaining to concerns about pollutants from the existence of a parking lot and pond. However, tonight, I wanted to speak in that line. But in the original drawing of the pond and in the plans, it's the type, it's in their... One of their supplemental data reports, it's page nine. But I think that'd be like in the 50s of the actual document. And so they originally modeled it only on Paylet's drainage. And then at the request of Concerned Abutters, they modeled other properties that would potentially drain onto Paylet, basically doubling their water that would go onto their pond, after insisting that it was inconsequential. And in their original drawings, a two-year storm would infiltrate entirely in the ground with its 3,000-odd cubic feet. Now, in a two-year storm, that same 3,000, nearly 4,000 cubic feet infiltrates into the ground, while 2,467 cubic feet discharge to the culvert. So now they're putting water where it's like, what else have they failed to account for? Are we supposed to feel confident when we were assured that water from other properties were inconsequential? When they double it now? And just once again with the cost things, if they don't, they're asking for variance after variance. They can't meet size. They can't meet landscaping. If they have neither the space nor the money for this project, why should we on Dunshire feel comfortable that our properties will not be at that expense? Paylet is uphill from us. They will not flood. Dunshire floods. So are we supposed to feel confident that our properties won't be damaged or destroyed? Because Paylet has a parking lot that they shouldn't have been allowed to build in the first place? Or unwisely built? And so I guess a lot of us really are very concerned at, why does this property have to happen when the bylaws don't really seem to stress that? I mean, in Boston and in Lowell and other larger cities, there's no obligation for your building to provide parking. This was built in the 60s. There isn't parking. It's inconvenient for the residents. But should we inconvenience the entirety of Dunshire Drive for their convenience of parking? And so I feel like a lot of our concerns haven't been alleviated yet. Thank you very much.
Got a couple of other questions.
Okay. I have a couple of other comments, but I'll let you do your questions first.
Casey, is there an opportunity to elongate that pond up on that side of the...
So Castori paved that several years ago. Our client, the property owner, is going to proceed with attempting to have Castori remove that. But we don't have any intention of changing the pond. The pond meets all requirements as is. And we don't have any intention of elongating it, redirecting it, as it meets the requirements as shown.
Okay. The doors that are along that driveway, are those regular standard exit doors? Are they backdoors?
They're exit doors, but there's probably about four or five steps to each of them. So they come out, if you're looking at the side of the building here, they come out on the side. So they don't actually go directly out into the driveway. The door comes out into a concrete pad, which then has stairs that goes down the side of the building to where you then enter the driveway.
Evan, can you zoom in on that one? So that, the one along the... That one does. But what about the one in the corner? That one, yeah.
Yep. So this one also has steps that goes down forward to the driveway. But there is a 5-foot concrete pad and then also a concrete pad at the bottom of it.
Okay. So it's about 10 feet?
From the driveway? Yeah, I'd probably say it's about 10 feet from the door to the driveway.
Okay.
I drove down that in my little Subaru. I felt really like...
Well, don't forget, that driveway's getting widened from 13 to 20 feet as well.
Would it be possible to put that, the walkway sideways towards the other doorway? So it joins up with that other walkway?
Rotating the staircase?
No, not the stairs. But when you come down the stairs, instead of stepping off into the driveway, you'd be directed to the right.
Well, if you had a 5-foot walkway at the bottom of the stairs, that's just going to bring you to the edge of the curb anyway. So even if you ran the sidewalk this way?
Yeah.
It's still the same amount of concrete as it would show here. People would just continue to go that way.
Yeah, but if you have maybe a railing fence directing people, so you're not stepping into the... You're not stepping into the driveway right at that blind corner. You're going down a little bit further.
So one of the options that I was discussing earlier this afternoon was the potential of adding... So this fence is, there's going to be a fence installed. I should have just stayed up there. There's going to be a fence installed, or the fence is going to be installed along the property line here. Maybe we could add a mirror on the fence that allows, that's angled so that people driving in can see that blind corner. I think that is something that we could offer so that on, basically, anyone driving here isn't actually blind to what's coming off of that corner. I think if you added a railing right along or adjacent to that curb line, you're going to affect the stability of the curb that it's up against as well.
I know this letter was meant to answer these questions, but now I feel like I'm not quite satisfied.
Can I highlight one portion of that letter? Which is what we've been working on, or working off of since, basically, the entirety of this began. So essentially, what happened is, they sent a letter, and then they had a follow-up meeting with the owner.
The owners.
And it ended with, furthermore, the meeting concluded with the understanding that the owning group would hire an engineering firm to design a more permanent and appropriate parking area to accommodate the vehicles that are in the cul-de-sac, and then construct it to move the cars completely off of the street. They were informed that due to the location, Conservation Commission approval would be required.
Okay. But could we revisit that? I mean, Evan, like, can we think outside the box and ask?
I mean, you... I haven't been involved in those conversations. I was involved in the meeting that I mentioned in. My understanding is that the applicant, Casey, has met with Tony Rapucci, the town engineer, multiple times. The board can certainly articulate specific questions and attempt to engage...
Yeah. Is there any other way to do this besides building a concrete parking lot in the back in a wetland?
So, you know, I think one of the abutters did ask this. The applicant is attempting to comply with what they believe DPW is either requesting or requiring.
Right.
And so they've submitted zoning permits and wetland permits to do so.
There, there is nothing, and this, I think the abutter kind of suggested this. If the planning board doesn't want a parking lot there, or wants a smaller parking lot there on private property, the board can indicate that and indicate, indicate its willingness to grant reductions, either in its entirety or partially. I'm not suggesting that that solves the problem. It's still not clear to me if DPW is suggesting that they don't want any parking on the curb line of the cul-de-sac.
Right. I would like to see if we could get that part clarified.
I think Casey has clarified that. We may need to hear that again. What I'm piecing together is that if the, if the existing ladder truck cannot accommodate the size of this undersized cul-de-sac, and if there are cars parked at the curb, that would essentially mean that the town would likely go in at, once this parking lot is built, the town would likely go in and then sign the cul-de-sac, no parking. They would treat it differently than, than other town-owned roads, assuming that the facts are that it is undersized. So I think that's what I heard Casey say. And that may be why DPW has indicated that the long-term solution is no parking once the private parking lot is built.
What year was this building built?
In 1962.
So they've been dealing with this since 1962? They've been using this cul-de-sac?
Yep. And plowing it.
And what happens, can I ask you a question? What happens when there's a snowstorm? Do the cars stay there and the plows go around them? Or do the?
We plow and, or, my name's Kathy Romberg. My parents owned the building, and we inherited it, my sister and I. But we have been plowing the parking area of the cul-de-sac for all the years that we have owned it. And.
Around the cars?
All the way up to 3A? Or just the?
Just, just the area where our cars were parked. The town basically drives in and plows straight in, and we've been taking care of the rest for, and we've, we've owned the building since, I think, the early 70s. Early 70s, late 60s.
Why don't we suggest, they suggest that they stripe the cul-de-sac for proper parking and work with the town on a pathway around those cars?
But it sounds like DPW doesn't want that.
It's been here since, that's 1962. They've got to come to the table.
I, I think, yeah, I, I think the town needs to figure out what exactly they want us to do so that we can do it. You know, our funds are not unlimited.
Right.
And.
Did the town say what they're going to do if, if you don't comply?
Toad.
They're going to toad.
Well, this, this is why the applicant is complying. I mean, the discussion was that they had a certain amount of time for a good faith effort. This is their good faith effort.
So what happened between 1962 and 2023?
Change in DPW people.
Well, that should be addressed.
Okay, what about another thought? Can we be totally, you guys are going to think I'm crazy, but outside the box, could we have a, like, collaboration with the town and maybe the restaurant? And maybe use some CPC funds to buy up that little strip of land and take out the parking lot and get the tree committee to come in and plant some trees and increase the green space and protect the, I mean, like.
It's quite the collaboration.
Could we get a grant? Could we apply for a grant to do that? And can we get the DPW to get off our back until that?
For what it's worth, Castori, when he plowed over, when he paved over that area, did not ask for permission.
Right. So, he could probably be made to remove it. Anyway.
He no longer owns it.
Okay. That's, yeah, thank you.
And the reason they, they paved it is because their delivery trucks had a hard time making it around the back of the restaurant.
I see. Okay, thank you. I mean, I don't know. Like, we, we see all these grants for?
The grants are for public infrastructure, not private infrastructure.
Okay, but if we made that a public green space, and it improved, you know, the wetlands and improved the water drainage, and it, and it preserved a wildlife habitat, and it?
If it were, if it, if it were town-owned, or we could prove at the time of application that it were town-owned? But I, I mean.
But I don't think it's going to improve the drainage in that space.
If we extended the pond, it might.
I mean, at that, at that point, if the, if the town were contemplating buying land to solve a problem, why wouldn't the town contemplate selling portions of the cul-de-sac? No different than, you know, some of the private ways that the planning boards approved. My understanding is that all of those conversations have taken place. And I think if, if Casey or the applicant got any indication from DPW and FIRE that, that the cul-de-sac, that there were alternatives to be discussed as part of the cul-de-sac, I think the plan likely would have been revised by now.
Correct.
You know, the, the commission, and either of you can articulate this better than me, but in watching the, the commission's meetings, they asked for DPW to attend so that this, this kind of engagement could take place. And that was not, that was not offered. So clearly, Tony and other DPW are engaged with people, the public, the, you know, the applicant, who are looking to ask questions. And then they're communicating to the planning board and CONCOM through their, through their written memos.
And this all came about because there was an incident they couldn't get through? Like, how did they find, like?
Yeah, I don't know the specifics. But as the memo indicates, I mean, this, I think this formally became a town, a town interest or priority back in 2023.
August.
I'm not suggesting that police and FIRE or DPW weren't on the road prior to 2023.
No, but I wonder if something was wrong or something.
I can't tell you what the specifics were. The first meeting I attended, the police, FIRE, DPW had already been engaged, and I was invited because they knew that we'd be talking about a private parking lot.
I, I think it would be helpful to hear from someone from police and a FIRE because they're the folks that are going to be out on that road if there's a problem in the middle of the night. And that would help, help, I think it would help us make a decision as to what are the consequences if we don't approve this.
And DPW?
DPW.
Well, if we don't approve it, they're, they have no place to park, and they've already said they're going to get towed.
Right. So there's, so, let's assume the private parking lot goes away. They can either attempt to resolve the, the parking lot on the curb, which it sounds like DPW and FIRE have basically determined that that's not a long-term option because the cul-de-sac's undersized. Then the only other option for the applicant is to seek off-site shared parking arrangements. That's not an ideal situation, particularly for a residential development. But that, that is a legal option. So I think, I think within the context, they're attempting to comply. I mean, they told the town they'd do a good faith effort, and they're certainly doing that. But it's also clear to me that DPW and FIRE have been re-engaged a number of occasions, and there doesn't seem to be any, any alternatives being, being explored.
So if we ask for them to come to a meeting, they probably wouldn't come?
Their response was, we respectfully reject your request.
But they go to, they go to the Vinyl Square Committee meeting.
DPW? You can make, you can certainly make the request. Because what Casey's indicating is that the commission made, made that request.
Yeah.
All right, well, I think we should make that request.
Does anybody have a letter?
Yeah, we have a letter. It's in our packet.
From whom?
From the DPW.
It's an old letter based upon the initial plan.
No, the October 28th, 24 one.
October 7th, a review letter?
October 28th.
October 28th, 24.
Is that on here?
It's in the packet.
So if someone, if the restaurant paved without a permit, doesn't, regardless of how long it's been there, doesn't the town have the right to have them tear it up?
It's second to the bottom on the packet under new documents.
Regardless of who owns it.
Yeah, the town may have zoning enforcement opportunities on the former Castori. I wasn't aware of the extent of the encroachment in the recent, the recent paving up until this evening's conversation. So the town certainly, I mean, that's, that's a zoning violation. That amount of paving would require planning board approval, stormwater calculations, things of that nature. We can pursue that.
Like, I mean, that may not.
I think we should.
Yeah, but I mean, we should, they have, I mean, all this flooding, that can help at all. We should definitely pursue that.
Well, whether it would help or not, I mean, we just can't have people going around paving wetlands.
Right. No, no, I mean, as you know, I mean, between board members, Conservation Planning Board and staff, we catch a lot from the street. Sometimes it's, it's more difficult if it's behind a building and so forth. But like I said, I'm surprised, at least I'm putting that, you know, figuring that out tonight. I wasn't aware, that wasn't really highlighted, I think, in prior meetings.
Is the conservation agent aware of that?
So I'll, I'll circle it, David.
They have authority to, in that matter, too.
Michelle Caputo, Starkweather, 19 Dunshire Drive. I'm back again. So there was a question about, like, could we have other town parking? And a conversation I had with one of the Conservation Commission members yesterday was that also in a butter of, for Palette and my house, 19 Dunshire, is the Frank Brock's Conservation Area, which apparently nobody knows we have, but a mapping GIA says we do. And when I went and looked, it's owned by the Town Conservation Commission. It is literally, apparently, the concept of we're just going to pave wherever we want at Castori's was in place there, too. They have parking right there at the Frank Brock's Conservation Commission property, right there. There's a whole big section, if you're looking at the left-hand parking lot side of the, the building. That whole left-hand side belongs to the town. Can we just stripe it and let people park there? It's actually off the road. It's, and it would be legal Chumsford parking. Would that be an acceptable option? I don't actually know how big that is in terms of, like, how many spots.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I have no concept of, like, size and distance and how many cars fit and things. But I, I actually sent an email this afternoon to all of you and to the Conservation Commission saying, hey, here's the lot, here's the page, blah, blah, blah. And you own it. So if maybe we could do something with that, maybe that would allow for parking that. It's town parking.
I mean, it depends on the covenants and all that. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
It should be, it shouldn't be paved. It shouldn't be paved.
Sereitha Fernandez, 27 Dunshire Drive. This will be quick, but just to give you guys a little bit of what it looks like for what they were parking there prior to November of 2023. If you bring up the culvert, not the cul-de-sac picture, I can explain it a little bit because I see it. So when they have this here, the majority of the parking is later in the day, in the evening. During the day, if you go there, it can be fairly open, there might be nobody there. When they were parking here previously, and you can actually look at the old visions of Google Maps and see the lines in the road, at some point, Palette Drive painted lines in this section and made a parking lot here. And if you were driving around this area, like, when we first moved there, like, 10 years ago, some cars there. But over time, a lot more cars were tending to get in here. So not only were using this section, they were starting to park here. They were blocking even like their own areas here. It was all over the place, to the point that if they were having, like, events, because sometimes they were having that, using that back area and actually having some parties, this is completely full. And you could see the fire trucks coming in here, and they get stuck, like, out here. The cops would come, they'd be over here. They couldn't actually get through. And when they, after they moved the dumpster, I think I told you before, the dumpster is on my property for years. It took me about three, three years to get them to remove it. When they put the dumpster over here, they actually lost a few parking spaces because they had a few more in this area. What happens now, when they park after, you know, they were still in here before the town made the move, the dump, the truck, the truck that takes, picks this up, dump truck, couldn't actually get in here. And at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, literally, this is their first stop. They're blaring their horn, trying to get people to move. They now come a little bit later because I contacted them and asked, not all the time. But when they're parking here, even straight out, sometimes they're still blocking the access to this dump truck, and they still can't get in there, and that's a problem. And like I said, I'd like to see what it looks like if they actually were parking parallel, you know, to the side of the road, because that would probably alleviate some of this. But you've got to remember, they're not showing you the full picture. You have a condo over here as well. And the condo over here has a road. So they're trying to get through to their area, and sometimes when they have overflow parking, because all their parking's here, it, they go into this area. So you have a lot of cars that can end up here.
Got it.
And then just one other thing, the snow removal. The town would come in, do a straight line in and straight line out because they couldn't actually plow around the cars. Palette Drive would come in with their plow person, and they would plow their snow into my yard through. I actually have that snow fence out there, it's ugly, it's orange. They, they plow into that all the time. They're the ones that dug, I told you, the drainage actually off of Palette Drive was removed in 1996, and they put it in the sewer. They dug a ditch around that time that all this stuff was occurring because I was contacting the town about what the hell is going on. They dug a ditch to drain, and their plow guy, what does he do? Plows the snow right into the ditch because that's where he's going with all his stuff. So definite concerns with this over here, but this is a mess. It's, it's not that big when you're in there with all these cars. So it is a safety hazard because these, if there's somebody that needs a medical emergency, they can't get there. So I get it.
So procedurally, at the direction of the board, I will send that email request to DPW.
Let me.
DPW and FIRE.
Should we, can we assemble a list of questions for them?
You can certainly send them to me. My, my anticipation is that they're going to respectfully decline physically attending. At the end of the day.
Could they Zoom attend?
I mean, I'll, we can, we can, we can make that invite. At the end of the day, unless there's some, you know, change from DPW, the planning board, similar with the Conservation Commission, you have valid applications in front of you. So the point I'm making is that I think this, this, the commission attempted to do this exact outreach for their last night's meeting that dates back probably two, three weeks. Planning board appears to be interested in replicating that.
I just don't understand why we can't have a conversation with DPW. We're an elected board by the town, representing the town. They work for the town. They work for us as, as residents. They should attend upon our request. I'm part of the Vinyl Square Committee, it's all volunteers. They all attend those meetings, and that happens at night as well. They should be here. And I would recommend that we don't make a decision until they come in front of us and ask, tell us why they're, they're making this neighborhood do this. Especially when we have conflicting information on letters. That's just my take. And I don't know if you guys agree with that or disagree with that.
I agree with that. I mean, I, I feel like it's kind of asking a question you don't know the answer to because.
But we'd like to just have a discussion with them. Why can't we have this discussion?
Right.
We don't know the answer.
Right.
But for 61 years, it worked here. What's changed?
Well, that's what I'd like to hear because I guarantee you, they're going to have, they must have responded to some kind of complaint.
I agree, there's probably something.
They just dreamed this up out of, you know, random.
No, I agree. They went here for something.
Right. And it was a problem.
And obviously, like, between the two apartment buildings, this is, like, I, I can see this area getting, you know, filled, right? Because it's this apartment building and the other one in this spot. But again, is there something we can do?
Maybe there could be overflow gas parking somewhere else.
On the, on the other apartment, right, right. Or some, is there some other way of approaching this with this cul-de-sac? And to your point, like? And to your point, like, where are all the new cars coming from? Like, when was the other apartment building built?
Well, I mean, this was built in 62, that most residents didn't have two or more cars.
Right.
And now in 2023, 2024.
People would have had two more cars in the 80s, yes.
Yeah, they should, and it's probably been there for many years.
All right, so action points. We're gonna ask the DPW to please come. I would like to, I mean, this could be a, this could be a template for a collaboration between
Go ahead, keep going.
Conservation, the Tree Commission, CPC, like, is that ridiculous for us to think about trying something like that?
Or could you take it offline and have a collaboration?
Right.
Not at night, if they don't want to attend at night. Have a meeting during the day with representatives of the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the neighborhood there with the DPW and FIRE.
And FIRE, and police, and, yeah.
I heard, and neighborhood, that would include us?
Yes.
You would have a representative there.
Thank you.
I mean, that's what, I mean, there'll be representatives of everybody, it wouldn't be up to the whole public.
Right, right.
Representatives to have a collaborative meeting. If they don't want to come at night, maybe we won't meet them at their terms, we'll go nine to five. And, and, and meet with them. I mean, or at least get some answers, why is this being forced? Are we barking up a wrong tree here? Evan, I think we are, right?
I mean.
I can hear it, see it.
I can only tell you what has played out over the last, you know, 30 days.
But I also, I want to, again, look at this other piece of property that has paved over Conservation. And with that, then talk to, you know, like, what is, what impact would that be, having that torn up? If it's true, indeed, it was paved, how does that affect the stormwater? With DPW, how does that affect all the drainage?
And what about the overpaved area?
Right, that may allow for this parking lot to be, like, that, if we're maybe fixing that, can we fix some of these issues that could allow some sort of parking, this parking in the back? Like, that may be, you know, a different way of kind of getting everybody on the same page. But, I mean, I do feel for these folks that we're not helping the situation by just adding this parking lot. And they may not, and DPW may not have been aware, right? Like, I mean, they may not have been aware that. And again, this is like a little bit taking the steps.
Yeah, I mean, final comment. My understanding is that DPW has indicated that they are not forcing a parking lot to be built. I don't think they care if a private parking lot is built. They own the road. And it's clear to me that they don't want to treat this cul-de-sac differently than any other cul-de-sac in the town. They don't want to set precedence where individual cul-de-sacs can be treated differently.
Fair enough, yeah.
So that's why I think you're, you're not seeing them mark the curb line. Because if they do it here, then other cul-de-sacs may, may request the same thing. You know, so, and I don't think they want to engage in planning board business as it pertains to whether to approve or not to approve. I mean, their, their review is pretty limited, from a technical perspective. So.
But Evan, in some ways, they are forcing.
Well, they'll, they'll tell you, they will tell you, if they haven't put it in writing, that their, none of their letters are requiring them to build a parking lot. Nor are they suggesting, you know, any, any particular solution.
No, but cars have to go somewhere.
Correct.
And.
Correct.
The likely logical.
Understood, understood.
So the, right, the applicant, rightfully so, the only thing that they have in their control is.
Is their backyard.
Private parking lot, right.
Is their backyard.
Right, and that's a convenient and an investment on, in their property.
So who's gonna start towing the cars, I guess?
Fire Department and Police Department.
So can we at least explore?
The reasons that the parking is no longer being allowed.
That, and then what would happen to the drainage? Like, could we at least explore that whole thing that the town owns that's paved?
Well, that was gonna be, the thing I was gonna say is that certainly we should ask the zoning enforcement officer to take a look at that.
Yeah, the cast, the illegal paving on the former Castoree's property, we will pursue enforcement, Conservation, Planning, Building Commissioner. That timeline is not going to align itself very nicely with this timeline.
That would be, I mean, that would be a reason to have a meeting with the people who are forcing this to occur, to, to talk about the relative timelines involved and.
Sure, sure.
Because if that, right, because if that becomes, like, again, like, exactly, just leave it at that.
I'll send the email. I mean, there's, you know, for what it's worth, there's nothing preventing a chair, a vice chair from reaching out as well.
Clarify the timeline.
Okay, yep, yep.
Do we have time to try and find a better solution than a parking lot in the backyard?
I'll, I'll send the email. If, if the chair, vice chair, if you, between today and tomorrow, you want to reach out directly, let me know and.
To Christine Clancy or who?
It'd be, it'd be, start with Tony, the town engineer, who's the primary point person on this. They'll engage, I don't, they'll engage privately, because I know that they have. There just seems to be an unwillingness to engage in a, in a public forum.
Okay.
I'll plan on sending the email tomorrow if I, if I, if I don't hear otherwise.
No, please do, and then I'll.
Okay, all right.
I think we have one more question, wants to come up. You have a question?
Then we're gonna close this.
Continue.
John Kelly, Dunshire Drive. This has gone on for 60 years. I don't think we'd, to delay it another 30 days or three months would make a big difference. It's a significant decision. I'm gonna pass out one photo. This happens on Dunshire Drive every single month. I can show you the time dates and all that, all that you want. The fact that you, when you say to me you don't want to let someone have a public meeting, that doesn't sound like a very much transparency. I'd like to know, have we towed any vehicles out of there? Has the fire department, anybody ticketed anybody? Or is it just simple, there's a lot of roads that we have to allow a little bit of leeway? I think, are we just using this one little section of a, of a bylaw or something that, from 60, that we planted years ago as an excuse just because we want to build a parking lot for the convenience of the building? It would be probably advantageous to them to have a parking lot on their own property. And by the way, do they have to have one for an electric car?
Thank you. Okay, I will, did you want to say something?
I actually just want to request some feedback based on the actual plan in front of you, additionally. Because we've talked a lot about alternatives, but, you know, if, in the case that that doesn't turn out over the next few weeks or a month, I also want to have feedback on the plan that you do have.
So what, because we can also make the parking lot smaller if the town allows them to park, like, around, like, properly around.
Like, parallel park, yeah. If we get some of the, if we get some of the cars out of the parking lot.
Right, so if we can get something from DPW that would say that as a long-term solution, they'd additionally allow parallel, and maybe we can come up with an amount that could safely be accommodated, could reduce that from the parking lot and request a further reduction from parking requirements through the special permit process that we're in now, but we definitely need.
Are there eight units?
Eight units, correct. And, and basically, what we're proposing in front of you is 16 parking spaces, which is the amount that Kathy feels that they need as part of this for the tenants that they have.
They're two-bedroom units, and we would basically limit them to two cars per unit. And right now, there are at least a couple of units that have only one person in them, and they want only one car.
Right.
I mean, maybe there could, we could figure out a way, or you could figure out a place for overflow parking.
We have, we can have our management company, you know, keep a record of the allowed, the allowed cars.
Right, you know what, I don't want to get into that right now.
Yeah.
Thank you. I am, I think we're gonna continue the public hearing.
So the only thing I would request is, if there is feedback that I could have based on the plans, that for next time, I could have additional information, I would, I would just like to have the opportunity.
Maybe if you could figure out what would be, what would be manageable parking spaces based on the, the regulated size of a parking space that could go around the cul-de-sac.
Based on the town's requirement for a parallel parking space.
Yeah, and then how many that would be? And then how that would change the size of the parking lot?
So I guess my next question would be, would we seek to have this, let's call it collaborative meeting with DPW prior to the next hearing here? Because that would dictate, I guess, the future direction of the design of this project. So if they were to be agreeable to that, then obviously we have design changes to make to reduce.
Right.
So.
So I think we should try and do it as soon as possible, if they're willing to do it.
And just for clarity, the applicant's invited to that collaborative meeting?
Of course.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Casey, I gave you feedback already on some.
I did, I have yours written down, Chris.
Okay.
December 11th is your next regularly scheduled meeting.
We have one more person who wants to speak for the, I think, third time. Does it, what do you guys think?
Sure.
Come on up.
Come on up, we can, I can get all the information.
So Seritha Fernandez, 27 Dunshire Drive. If they were to go off of the parallel parking, my only add would be, could they build a frickin' fence to block that section? And on their, you know, not on my property, that'd be the request. Because I think they could definitely fit some cars if it was clearly marked. Because there's also that section that goes up. There's no reason why maybe one side of that long way could be done, but just the fence would be great.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to continue the public hearing to?
December.
December 11th?
We're gonna have time.
December 11th, yes.
Second.
Motion by Mike Raisbeck, second by Anita, on favor.
Aye. All right, thank you all very much for your time. Okay, we're covered from now.
Okay. Next up, we have 10 Independence Drive waiting so patiently, sorry. Attaining a special permit for an adult daycare.
Good evening. For the record, again, Adam Costa, me, Talia Rinaldo Costa, representing the applicant. So we were before you a few weeks ago, we presented our plan for redevelopment of a portion of what most of you know as the Radisson Hotel with an adult daycare. We presented the plan to you, our engineering consultant walked through the particulars of the site plan, much of which is remaining the same as it has historically been. And then what followed was a discussion about certain concerns, I don't want to characterize or speak for board members, but certain concerns that the board had about exterior circulation, queuing with respect to the drop-off of, of individuals, sufficiency of, of parking and the proximity of some of those parking spaces to the entrance to the facility. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the mic over in a moment and allow Hushy to walk you through the particulars of the revisions we've made to the plan in the past couple of weeks to try to address those concerns. A combination of restructuring the parking areas, providing a lengthier queuing area, changing the, the circulation so it's one-way in certain locations, cutting off other areas. So without further ado, I'll let Hushy walk through that, and then certainly we can respond to any, any questions that board members might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Hushman Dafshart, Hodge Engineering. So Evan, if you could go to last sheet, A4, please. Keep going. Yeah, can you zoom up? So one question or comment was that show clearly the limits and boundaries of the floor area being used by the daycare. So as you can see, that entire area which is being used either by the daycare directly or as a support for the, for running of the daycare is hatched here in addition to the floor area being used by the residents and the administrative office, the nurses' office and so on and so forth in the back. As we mentioned last time, also, the kitchen, the existing kitchen in the back, which is, which is being used only to serve the needs of the adult daycare area is also hatched. And the corridor in between the two, which is being used just for food traffic between the kitchen and the daycare area. So that was one of the comments which I hope you have addressed to your satisfaction.
So the, so those two, the rooms on the, my right, that are white, then what is the access to those, those areas if it's not through? Before, you, you could access it through that hallway that's now designated strictly for the adult daycare. So what is the access to those rooms?
The access is, the, that is set up a stage that you can see on the bottom right corner of the page.
Yeah.
And also from the back.
Okay.
And they use for those rooms really to be decided, we don't know. But they are not definitely part of.
That's why, I just wanted to see there was access to, to front door access.
They have their own independent access.
Do the hatched bit will be securely contained?
Correct, yes, of course. Nobody else really needs to go there.
Right, right.
People to other areas have their own access, hotel has its own access.
But there are three doors, one to the lecture room, one to the meeting room, and one to the hallway. Are those gonna be secured doors, exit only, or?
Those are actually, those rooms actually, the way it's labeled, it's from the past. It's, it's to be decided what those rooms are going to be for, to be used. But in terms of daycare, yes, they, they are being secured. And the only reason you have access from daycare area into that hallway that comes out of the building is an egress, a second egress, that's it.
Right, but there's also a door to the meeting room and then to the lecture room from those.
There, there are, and we can secure those doors. I mean, this is one of these circumstances where if we were building this and we were starting with a blank slate, we wouldn't build space we don't need, so we wouldn't build these additional rooms. We had meant to, and it didn't occur to us until literally we reviewed these an hour before the meeting, that these labels had been kept on there, because we had discussed amongst ourselves just putting TBD. Because, of course, we have a whole second story that is TBD. There's gonna be something additional occurring with this building in the future. We don't know what that is right now. We're gonna need permission from this board and maybe from others to do anything further. That hasn't yet been determined. But this is just an area of space that exists, we don't need it for the adult daycare. And so we're just trying to segregate it off on paper by showing you an area that's cross-hatched, an area that's not. But we will have to provide a secure connection between the two. We're not gonna, you know, drywall over the door, but we will cause some lock so that it's not inaccessible.
Okay.
And it won't be used in connection with the proposal that's.
Right, right.
And we could put that as a condition as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And yet, there is a, a door at the end of the corridor from the daycare into the, into the hallway, into the corridor. It's not a direct connection. Going back to, if I may, Madam Chair, go to site plan.
The parking.
Going to the site plan, we did, made the traffic circulation one-way in front of the building where you access the adult daycare.
For the drop-off.
Entrance and the, the hotel. We provided a longer space for the queue in case some of the residents want to be dropped off, you know, what, their family members? And in case there's a queue, otherwise, there are full-size vans for transportation. We added also one more space for the van access handicapped area in front. also one more space for the van access handicap area in front. And also, we basically managed to relocate all the, if I may, to relocate all the parking required for the daycare just in this area, and here. And this is of course for the employees, or those who are going to, staff members. And although in big parking areas like a mall, or a big shopping plaza like we have here, even in town, it's not customary to put a crosswalk within the parking areas, maybe some of the, you know, aisles where there is main aisles. But in these parking areas, usually traffic is probably five miles per hour or so. But we, we did manage to put a crosswalk here for this area, and then right from this handicap area, we also put a crosswalk right into the ramp, which wa, which goes right into the, into the building for easy access of the handicap. We have plenty of, oh, we did add, the sign is here, 5R-1, then no, one, one, one-way sign here, and one, one-way sign here. I didn't get time to put the logo of the sign itself like this one, but this, but, but the indication, Uniform Traffic Manual, those are the labels for one-way, one-way sign, which will be put here and here. And these are the no-enter sign to here and to here, where the traffic flows in one direction. The canopy remains as it is. It's, it's become to a modern, a flat roof canopy, but the clearance, the existing clearance of the canopy for the hotel doesn't change, although it has got really nothing to do with the, with the daycare. But I said, said it in case something, a, a, a big vehicle with, that needs a high clearance can, can go through, can drive through. We added some landscape area here, 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 and then here, we added three islands, landscape islands with light pole. This hatched area at the very end shows all the extra reserved parking. It, it, it's not, the, the, the picture doesn't show it here, but we have about, all the way to the right, please, sorry.
Forty-seven.
Yes. We have about, how many?
Says, says forty's additional parking available, forty-seven.
Forty-seven extra parking after allocating all the entities on the, on the parcel they require parking spaces. So with that, if I could answer any question?
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Nope.
I'm good, thank you.
Joel?
Nope.
Mike?
All good.
Anita?
All good.
Chris?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh my, and I have none.
You're just tired.
Actually, I do have a comment. I, I do appreciate the changes that you've made to the traffic flow. I think it's definitely an improvement.
I do too.
Sure. I'm tired too, actually. The applicant was marking up yesterday till 5:00 PM.
All right, does anyone else from the public want to speak, or make comments, or have questions?
Motion to close public hearing.
Seeing none, motion, I'll take a motion.
Move that.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Tired. Okay, I'll take another motion.
Your turn.
Before we get to that, I just had one thing that I thought of.
In that little sign?
I know. I wrote it down as a potential condition, but I want to make sure that they're agreeable to it.
Okay.
In the section where you have the four adult daycare parking spaces that used to be an access, I believe, is there a possibility of putting like a sign in the middle of those four saying, "To prevent no-cutting-through"? For people who are used to that?
You're, you're talking about a sign here?
Yeah. To prevent people from cutting through there if those spaces are empty.
Little baby jersey things, like parking blocker offers.
Yeah, those never stay.
Planters, whatever.
Where was that again? Can you just, can you point it to me? I couldn't see.
Two places, two spaces facing each other.
You don't want any, any, anybody drive-through?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if those are empty, people could potentially go straight around that traffic circle and right-cutting-through.
Yes, we can, we can, the easiest solution would be wheel stop.
Yeah, something like that.
On both sides, on, on all the forestalls.
Maybe a tree or two?
Maybe not there, three.
All right, so you're gonna, you're gonna install four wheel stops, one for each parking spot?
Exactly, yes, I will. We can.
Do you want to make that a condition then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, that's probably the easiest solution than putting a guardrail or anything.
That's fine.
Especially if it's handicapped people walking around.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve this, just a special permit, right?
Collection of, actually. Is it just one?
Just one for the use.
Just one, okay. And we approve the special permit with the condition of the four wheel stops, as well as the condition to secure the two doors at the meeting room and the other room, and the egress only into the hallway.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Anita, on favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, Rudeman. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry it took us so long. Sorry Nancy, it took even longer for you, but... Nancy Chen, here before us for the purpose of creating three new residential apartments at 313 Littleton Road, requesting approval under Article 21 Community Enhancement and SEOID. And I'm gonna stop there.
I have nothing to say, because last time, there is a missing letter from Jose, and then he just sent it to you, I think the day before yesterday, or something like that.
Yeah, would you like that read into the record?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a letter from, dated November 6th, from Jose Negron, Building Commissioner, Dear Ms. Chen, this letter is to inform you that per my recent visit to your property for the reinspection of units 14 and 21, these units are no longer in zoning violation as illegal apartments. Regarding the other proposed extra units to the, to the planning board, be advised that if the extra units ought to be approved by the planning board, your entire building has to comply with all current building, fire, and energy, and a registered design professional shall further assist you with all construction plans and code reviews as part of the permit application to the building department. Thank you respectfully, Jose Negron.
Okay.
So do we want to confirm the applicant agrees to that? What was the letter, again?
I'm sorry?
Jose specifically asked.
He's just, he's just clarifying what will be required as part of the building permit application.
Yeah.
Be advised, okay. So I just want to be sure you understand what, what he's asking, and that you are in agreement with that?
Yeah, we did it before, around the end of last year, at the beginning of this year.
Okay.
For just one unit.
Yeah, so what he is basically expressing to you in this letter, you agree with?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, every time we do remodeling, we have to get a building permit, and this and that, right?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions for Nancy? And is there anyone that else that would like to speak?
Move to close the hearing?
Okay, the motion to close the public hearing made by Mike, second.
Second.
Anita. Okay, so...
Aye.
We want a discussion? Oh, we have the vote on.
No, no, no.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
So we're reviewing this under 195-111, right?
Mm-hmm.
SEOID applicability.
Wait, we're not for applicability, are we?
No, no, this is...
We're approving a special.
It's a, it's a vi-rite.
This is the big kahuna.
Subsection, oh, see. Vi-rite.
Shall we have further discussion?
I'm gonna be a no on this project. I don't think that this is what the mixed-use is intended for, in terms of mixing commercial and residential on the same floor. I think that the layout of this building does not allow that to be easily done, and I don't think that this is going to be a, a workable proposal.
So, can I ask, would you be amendable if the whole floor was residential?
Potentially, with the right controls in place.
What controls would you need for...
Access to the different access.
That's the building inspector, right? Okay.
But we talk about it in a lot of other projects as well. We just talked about it at the prior
Yeah.
project.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this is like piecework here, like, we have one apartment, like, let's change this bill, like, again, if this is an investment and we're changing the whole overall, either the entire building, or making downstairs commercial, upstairs residential, that's what the project, like, I would be amendable for here too, not piecework here, let's put this apartment here. Like, come to me with a valid project. So I'm a no. I agree with Chris.
I, I thought we discussed this two...
We've, we've closed the public hearing.
We, we closed the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Just take a, you can take a seat.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mike?
I want my comments.
What?
You asking for comments, or?
Yeah, I was asking for comments. They're telling you, they're...
Yeah.
Okay. Joel?
I agree that, that it's not ideal in that sense, but I, on the other hand, I think that the controls are in there that we asked for, and so I, I would vote yes, even though I think that it's not necessarily what I would have asked for, but I think at least meets the minimum requirements.
I completely agree with Joel.
And John?
I have concerns for the reasons, not to repeat, that, that Chris stated earlier, as well on this project.
Okay. All right, so, should we take a vote, or take a motion to close the, we're closed?
Well, we've already closed here.
Okay, so I guess I'll just take a motion.
I would, I will move that we grant, whatever it is we were asked to grant here. Figure out exactly what it is.
Purpose of creating three residential apartments
Yes.
At 313 Littleton Road.
Yep, thank you.
Under SEOID. Motion by Mike, second by, anyone?
I'll second.
Motion by Mike Raizeback, second by Mike Walsh. Okay, take a vote, on favor? Three in favor, four opposed.
No, wait, I just didn't get the count.
What?
Three yeses.
Three yes, okay.
Who was opposed?
Opposed is Mike Walsh, Anita, Chris, and John.
Okay. Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Anita, simple majority.
Yeah.
I'll write that, I'll write that decision up.
No, close the public comment.
I'm sorry, the, we closed the public hearing. So, I mean, my recommendation to you Nancy, is that you talk to Evan tomorrow and discuss what options you can bring us, you, you can bring us the same plan within two years, or you can bring us a significantly different plan in a shorter timeframe. And since the majority of the disagreement over the plan had to do with the fact that there's multiple things happening on the same floor, that might be an opportunity for you to, to explore further, would be my suggestion. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. I'm giving you a suggestion. We voted, and it failed, and we're not discussing further. But you, that doesn't mean you don't have options of things you could do.
Move on to the next agenda item?
What's that?
Do I move on to the next agenda item?
I suggest we blow through the minutes and get them out of the way.
The minutes, I think, was, and liaison reports, right? So, does anyone have any liaison reports?
I haven't liaised lately.
We had a final square meeting last night, good, it was a small group of us.
With a bunch of DPW people there, apparently?
Well, they show up all the time. They usually have good representation there.
Do they all live in north, not south?
No, the police show up. I mean, it's just interesting how they like that committee, but, which is great, but...
Start going to that committee, seems to be the happening.
No, they've got, they've got a lot of different things going, they're trying to grow the committee more, and commitments of some of the, we just said, no snacks.
No snacks.
What we should do is, we should all go to the...
Yes.
It's Joe and Bill July.
There's more than three of us, then we would have to...
Small group, so, but it was a good meeting, but it was just about the different holiday events that are coming up, and looking for volunteers more up in the north, so, nothing to do with planning board. I did ask them about the interest of, a while ago, we talked about, do we want to do anything with the mills?
With what?
So, the mills, the two mill buildings, one of them's in the IA, and one's not, talked about, you know, they would like to further discuss that, but they didn't, they weren't prepared to have, discuss that. This was our first meeting since that came up.
I see.
We haven't met since the summer, so.
Okay.
There'll be further discussions on that.
What, what activities you're planning for?
They have the, the Christmas lighting of the town square coming up first week in December.
With the talking Christmas tree and all that stuff?
Yeah, yeah, so it was all about, put the lights up and all that.
Nice.
At Conservation last night, they had the pallet hearing, and 10 Hildreth is also still before that commission. It was continued because they still don't have natural heritage letter, and the quote from David is that they have promised to have it by the next meeting. And I think he said that a couple meetings ago, too. So, that is still an open...
What's that?
Who's, who's producing that?
Natural heritage.
Oh. Okay.
So, the commission can't take action
Yeah.
without some
Document.
documentation from natural heritage.
Interesting. Okay.
The Zoning Board of Appeals met last, last week on November 7th. The meeting lasted about two hours. I would say three-quarters of the time was spent discussing the proponents of a 40B on Maro's Ave, made, proposed some changes to attempt to respond to some of Butter's concerns, and then the last 30 minutes was discussing a parking area for a automotive repair business at 374 North Road, and that was basically the meeting.
What's going on with the one on Riverneck?
That was not...
That's Select Board.
They refiled as a regular 40B after the Select Board declined voting in favor of a friendly 40B. So they resubmitted...
This is the one beyond.
243 Riverneck Road.
243, okay.
I think, I think on Monday night's Select Board agenda, I believe they're, it's on there, and they're receiving comments, asking for comments.
And they asked Conservation for another letter, and so they're pretty much giving them the same letter they gave them last time, for the last mission.
I wanna see that letter.
This is the one that's in the ditch.
Yeah.
No, it's a ditch, like...
Where the, where the, where the building is condemned, in the front.
It's a steep slope.
It's probably across...
Probably across from Forest Street.
Like, yeah, you're.
Okay, minutes?
I've read them, anybody else?
Do you want to make, want to make a motion?
Before you do, I did catch one thing on the 25th, under discussions, new business, floodplain bylaw update, it's a pretty easy fix, awaiting state guidelines before further discussing floodplain bylaw updates, not ADU in that section.
Ooh, missed that. Okay. When I would move that we approve the 925 minutes as corrected.
Second?
Motion by Mike Resbeck, second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
I zoned out for a second, did we vote on both or just?
No.
No, just one.
Do them one at a time.
On the second one, October 23rd. Joel, did you vote on the public hearings?
You know, I was confused by that too.
Because I'm seeing some votes are 7-0 and some votes are 6-0, so I thought you had voted.
Let's hold off on that one, we'll double check.
Is it important?
Some of them are.
Well, if it was 7-0 or 6-0, I mean, the result's pretty clear.
The same is true actually of 10-Hildrith.
Yeah.
If you vote, wait a minute, I'm going to be swayed today. That was the last meeting, 10?
No.
Oh, that was just the straw poll that was?
1023 was the last meeting.
Oh, that was 10-Hildrith?
I don't think we did 10-Hildrith last meeting.
10-Hildrith?
It was the last one that we just voted on.
Last meeting was 15 Research Place and 321 Doorwork Road.
One of it was, those was only six, but it was only a straw poll, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I forgot to ring it up and it doesn't matter.
But I don't know if that matters at all, if it's.
That's mean.
Do you want to just wait and check it out?
Evan, can you double check on that one?
I can double check on those.
This is the 321.
Do you want to table that one?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll take a look at it.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by Anita, second by Mike Resbeck, and unanimous.